Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brooke Clinchey. I'm the superintendent of schools for the Neshoba Regional School District. And this evening at our regularly scheduled May 22, Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting, our first order of business will actually be to reorganize. This happens every year after the elections. First of all, we want to introduce, and I know that we'll spend another minute or two as we look at our new members in a few minutes once our election has been done, but we want to welcome Leah. Joe, Mary, we thank you so much for joining us at our table. It's a big commitment when you come to this table. We thank you so much for tackling this and taking it out. We want to welcome you with open arms and warm hearts. So, thank you very much for joining us. The first order of business is where to move citizens' comments underneath the election of the new school committee. The first order of business is going to be, of course, to take nominations for the new chairman. I'll do that. As soon as the new chairman has been decided upon, then I will turn the meeting back over to the newly created chairperson. So, with that, I'm going to open the meeting here and ask for any nominations of names for someone to sit as chair of the Neshoba Regional School Committee and see what nominations there are out there. Does anyone want to make a nomination? Steve?
I'll nominate Kathy Codien. For her number of years of experience in serving in the number two position, it is time for her to move on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I was just looking for the nomination. Are there any seconds for that nomination?
A second's that.
Joe, a second nomination, thank you. Are there any other additional nominations of names to put forward tonight for this Hearing none, we'll take a vote on Kathy Codien as the chairperson for the new school here. All those in favor, please respond aye.
Aye.
Thank you. With that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll turn the rest of the committee meeting over to you.
I feel the same way. I felt every time I started a new job, I just like my stomach is going. So, anyway, thank you, everyone. So, my first order of business is to entertain nominations for the position of vice chair for the school committee. Do I have any nomination? Yes, Leah?
I'd like to nominate Elaine Sefield.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Can I nominate as well a second?
Of course, of course.
I forget what happened last time, clearly. I would like to nominate Steve Rubenstein.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll say my nomination.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have two folks who have been nominated. I'd like to give each of them an opportunity to share with us their interest in the position. So, Elaine, since you were nominated first, I will.
Sure. I did prepare a statement. First, I want to say that I acknowledge this is a little awkward because we're all part of the same team. So, I want to acknowledge it and push past it because it's okay. Because there's two things that I know for certain. One is that everyone here wants to do their absolute best for our district. And two, that none of this is personal in any way. So, I'm speaking up tonight because over the years, I've learned that the only regrets I have in my life are when I didn't take the chance and put myself out there. So, MASC says that the vice chair's responsibilities are to back up the chair or the secretary as needed, and anything else is quote-unquote "as designated by the chair." With that in mind, I see the role of vice chair as an additional pair of helping hands wherever it's determined to be needed, to help the committee do its best work. I feel this suits me as I enjoy being a jack-of-all-trades. I'm a multitasker, and I value being prepared. I know I have a lot to learn. I see the role as a growth position to further both my personal education and to help us as a committee build our base of institutional knowledge. Every year, we have the opportunity, but also the challenge, of maintaining a high level of execution of our regular activities while setting new goals that we want to achieve. I have the time, the energy, and the passion for taking on additional tasks. I have the drive to make sure we all understand the ins and outs of committee work so that we stay mission-focused in moving forward. And I have the interpersonal and communication skills to ensure that every member is heard so that we can create synergistic value out of the diverse set of talents and skills that we have in our members. Speaking of members, all of us here are equals. So, the most important thing that I'll do this year, whether it's vice chair or not, is simply to model behavior consistent with our vision that we want to achieve as a committee. So, to me, that means serving within our system of checks and balances, including strict adherence to the open meeting laws and to all laws. That means contributing to respectful and productive debate. That means challenging our group to grow and improve, just as we would ask of our students and staff. That means building relationships within the confines of the law and our roles to build trust and institutional knowledge. And that means respectfully and sensitively calling out ourselves as a group if we drift away from our agreed-upon protocols or behaviors. So, that's why I'm asking for your support tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Steve?
She's very good. And I will, I'd like to withdraw my name as a candidate.
Oh, okay. But thank you. Thank you for your interest. And even in a non-official position, you contribute, your contributions are valued, and you bring a perspective and a sense of humor that we need on this committee. So, I'm glad you stood with us, and thank you very much for your willingness to be the vice chair. Okay? I think with that...
All in favor?
All in favor of Elaine as the vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Most? Staying? Okay. Thank you. So, the next position that needs to be filled is the position of secretary. And to be clear, Alita performs the duties of secretary during our regular meetings. This position is for someone to take notes when we go into executive session because Alita is not part of that. So, to take notes, to prepare the notes, and turn them over, and then at some point, we approve those notes. So, is, would, I'd like to entertain nominations for that position. And people can self-nominate if they so choose. Yes, Elaine?
Well, I'd like to nominate Steve Rubenstein, since he's clearly shown a desire to serve. I think he would be good in the ball, so, if he accepts.
Is there a second, Elaine? Is this something you would want to do?
I'd be happy to do it.
We would be happy to have you do it.
Thank you.
Okay, because I was going to offer up Mike Horace, since he's not here.
I learned, I learned a long time ago, you never miss a meeting when there's elections because...
Okay. I was going to say Mike, you keep. Thank you. All those in favor of having Steve serve as our secretary for this year?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone. Okay. The, well, let's wait a few minutes and get on with the other, some other things. We have citizens' comments on our agenda. Is there, are there any citizens who wish to comment? Okay. What agenda item are you speaking to, please?
The student report.
The student report, our student representative. Are you giving our student report?
No, I was, I had the impression that was, part of that report is about school culture.
We don't know because our student representative is not here. And so, I would respectfully ask you to not to present, since our policy has us speak to things on the agenda. If they've had to speak, are you going to stay for the whole meeting?
No.
Okay. So, if you give Alita your contact information, I'll be happy to get in touch with you to see what the issue is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Hearing none. We will move on to a more formal introduction of our new members, and then we'll go around, and the rest of us will introduce ourselves, just so it's, you know, everybody who's here. So, let's start with, with Joe. And, oh, tell us a little bit about why you're dying to be on this committee.
It's very simple. This is not my first time sitting on a school committee this evening. By the way, my name is Joseph Gleason. I live at 126 Brazel Lane in Lancaster, Massachusetts. Whatever's your command over Massachusetts. And the reason I ran for school committee was mostly because I have sons in the Neshoba Regional School District. But, in my heart of hearts, and to be true to be true, my first love has always been the time that I spent on the Grade Lawrence Regional occasion on the high school district committee. So, this evening starts my 12th year as a district committee representative. Grade Lawrence was my first love. My father was superintendent-director at Grade Lawrence, and I grew up at that school. But I want to promise each and every member of this committee and the administration here that this evening, on the 22nd day of May, 2019, is the last time you'll hear me say the words "Grade Lawrence." Thank you, manager.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm Maria McCarthy, and I live on Burnham Road in Bolton. And like, like Joseph, this isn't my first time on school committee, but it was a long time ago. I've got something in my contact lens, which, and with gas permeable, you know how awful that is. And so, it was a long time ago. Some of you weren't even alive when I was on school committee. It was '87 to '90, and that's when I was on school committee. And I was on the Emerson School Committee. And then, we were regionalized on the high school level, but not region, we were in a Union 47 with Stowe. So, I was on that committee, too. And then, I was elected to Neshoba, where I didn't realize, I was on leave of absence from teaching. I'm an English teacher, and I'm a retired principal. I have a lot of years of experience in education. And what I didn't realize was that, in effect, I was serving on three different school committees. So, I, although I was only on for three years, I really consider that I have nine years experience. In the, in one of the papers, it talked about the fact that I have six children in the district. I have six grandchildren in the district. And so, for them and for all the children in the Neshoba Regional School District, I'm here, retired, I do have time, and I have a lot of educational expertise, and I really want to devote that. But also, I'm a senior citizen, and so, thinking about the seniors, too. Seniors in high school, but also the seniors in the community. So, wanting to represent all of them and saying that this is how our democracy works. This is civic engagement, and that's why I'm here. So, I'm not crying, I apologize.
Thanks, Maria. Leah?
Hi, everyone. My name is Leah Viverido. I live on Kirkland Drive in Stowe. I am here because, like so many of you, I have four children of my own in the public schools. They'll, next year, they'll be in Center, Hale, and Neshoba High School. So, I think that I have a vested interest, of course. I'm also a teacher. I've been a teacher for 17 years. I teach high school, government, and history. And I love my job. I love working with kids, and I hope that I can not only serve the kids in my classroom, but also try to serve my own kids and the kids of the three towns.
Thank you. Well, let's go around and complete the loop. Elaine?
Hi, Elaine. I live on Maple Street in Stowe. I have two little kids, one of whom is at Center, and the other one hasn't started school yet, aged two. I, I'm an engineer, but also a businessperson. I've worked in analytics, big data, or marketing analytics for most of my career, but took some time off to have kids and decided never to go back. So, during that time, got interested in public policy, and that's sort of what started my interest in education being just an important issue for me. And yeah, I, it's sort of, right when my child entered school, saw an opportunity, was like, I'm going to get involved, I'm going to run for school committee. And so, that's what brought me here.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, I'm probably the senior member of the group here. I have, I have two children. One of them is 49 years old, and the other is 46 years old, and they do not live in the district. So, my grandchildren do not live in the district. However, come, I have, I came to the district about five and a half years ago and was elected two years ago to serve on the school committee. Over the last year and a half, my interests have kind of focused on LGBTQ and what's going on both in the system for them and, you know, otherwise. And I've always kind of been asking the questions about, well, if we're going on this trip, what happens to people who don't, who can't afford it? And do we have provisions to make sure that everybody has the same opportunities in the system that some of the more affluent parented children have in this district? And that's, that's my story.
Thank you.
You?
It was on to me that. I'm Elise Crossland, and I live, I'm the rep, one of the reps from Lancaster. I guess everybody's told a little bit about their jobs and who they are. So, I am an educational researcher for the nonprofit that does social sciences research. I focus specifically on technology and students with disabilities. So, as part of what drove me to run for school committee, also, I have two kids that are both at Mary Rollinson. But because of my background in special ed and working with kids with disabilities, educational equity is always really important to me, and special education, obviously, and that was one of the reasons why I ran for school committee, because I wanted the opportunity to be a part of making decisions and bringing that perspective. Thank you.
And I'm Kathy Codien. I'm a Lancaster rep, along with Joe and Elise. And I'm starting my fifth year, so I have seniority, which is scary that, you know, but anyway. Retired from education in 2014. Always wanted to be involved in civic work, giving back to the community, and never had time when I was working. And so, the opportunity arose in 2015 to run for the school committee, and here I am. My children are grown up. My husband and I have six grandchildren, three boys and three girls, and they do not go to school in this district, but I find myself giving their parents a lot of advice, if you will, when things don't sound right in the district they're going to. But it's about looking out for kids, advocating for the best interest of students, and everybody who works in this district, no matter what your job is, that's what we're all about. And our only interest, I think, is and should be what is in the best interest of all students. So, that's it. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves? I thought you should.
I think we're probably pretty well-known. I think we're, but I would say, if I could just make a quick comment, one of the strengths I think that this district brings to our kids is the fact that this table has that flavor around it, that we're always looking out for what's right for our children. But we have to couple that closely with our ratepayers, with our senior citizens, with our municipal workers and our municipal leaders, and with, there's a lot of different stakeholders that have a foot or a toe in our waters. And so, our job is to always look out for the children. We have to always keep in mind this larger picture, our staff, our administration, all of that. And I think one of the strengths this, this table has always brought is no personal agendas, there's just one agenda, and that's doing what's right for the district. And so, I feel incredibly blessed, and I'm so excited about having three new people come in again with that type of agendas. We thank you very much. So, Todd, I don't know if there's anything that, that you want to say, or...
Yeah, no, I'm thrilled to welcome the new three reps. This starts my, the hard-to-believe, my second go-around with the school committee. It's already been a year, so, it's been a great and productive year for me this past year. I think you'll probably find the same thing around the table with all of the members. It's a great bunch, so, welcome.
It's a great district. It really is. We're so proud of it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, a couple of things under the reorganization. I just want to remind folks, we have two more meetings before we go on hiatus for the summer. The next meeting is June 5, and we'll talk about that agenda toward the end of the meeting. And then, the last meeting is scheduled for June 19. And that will actually be a school committee workshop, where we will be joined by Dorothy Presser from MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And she will give us a little tune-up about what our roles and responsibilities are, but also work with us to develop goals for the year, and also talk about what would make sense for us in terms of a self-evaluation. The other thing that we will be doing at that meeting is reviewing our protocols and seeing if there's any fine-tuning we want to do of those. Prior to that meeting, I'll be sending out some documents for folks to look at about goals and evaluations, and also the protocols. This fourth, in 2016, the committee did develop protocols, but they have not been reviewed, and that's something that we should be doing annually. But I'll also send, I'll send you those, but also some examples of what other communities have done. There's a lot of similarity, and then you fine-tune them for, for your needs. So, that's the work that we will be doing. It will be from 5:00 in the afternoon to 8:00 at night, if we need all three hours. And I think, are we having it at Cyprian Keys?
Yes.
Yes. That's where we usually go to have our end-of-year retreat. And so, more information will be coming about that. So, please check your calendars. If there is a problem with the date or the time, then please let me know. Okay? So, the next item of business for us is to look at our proposed meeting calendar. And it is in amongst, everybody comfortable pulling up the materials, meeting materials on their computers? We good? So, the calendar is just a little bit different this year, not in terms of when the meetings have typically been scheduled, but for some other things that, that I will talk about in a minute. But as long as I've been on the committee, we've had our meetings on Wednesdays, the 2nd and 4th, or not consistently, but you can see the green spaces on the, on the calendar represent our regular meetings. So, we need to decide if we want to keep them on Wednesdays, and if the time, starting time of 6:00 is still a viable time for folks. Any thoughts, comments, discussion? Oh, Steve?
I think, I think we've all built our, our outside schedules around the Wednesday meetings on the 2nd and 4th, although sometimes it's the 1st, the 3rd, and the 5th.
Yep, yep.
But for the most part, every other week, let's say.
Okay.
At 6:00. I mean, we've all built our, our other schedules, our personal schedules around these, these days. So, these days, I think we should keep them the way they are.
Okay.
Unless anybody has a problem with it.
Other thoughts or comments, questions?
I just want to say, thank you for putting the additional dates in there, this important date section.
And why do we have that?
It's, it's really helpful.
I'm being facetious, because it was Mike Horace and Elaine as new members when, on PSC, when we started, we created a school committee manual, which is awesome, thanks to Alita. But one of the things that came up, when you do something over and over again, you don't notice things, and both Mike and Elaine said, geebers, it would be nice if we had an inkling of what was coming up. And so, that's, it looks good. I mean, yeah, I don't know that anybody would want to be on the committee if they saw all that, but that's okay. We have our committee. Now, everybody's sworn in, nobody's going anywhere. But, yeah, so, that is...
It's really helpful to go all the way up to June 2020.
Absolutely, yeah.
Schedule my vacations around that.
That's right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we going to, are we going to reinstitute, or are they going to reinstitute the tri-town meetings?
We don't know. That's sort of not a...
Yeah, that's not, that's not around this table.
Yes.
I have no idea.
We had talked about that at, at PSC when we were putting together ideas for the calendar. So, the member towns invite us, and so, we won't know about that. And we don't even have a policy around attending. As the chair, I would attend. Brooke, as the superintendent, would attend, and then it's, it's pretty much up to folks. I know it's a lot to ask, given everything else. But if one comes up, we'll talk about it around the table, and usually, we have agenda items to contribute to their tri-town meetings. So, but we'll let you know as soon as we know. Does anyone want to? Oh, no, let me talk about the other piece, and Elaine talked to, spoke to it a little bit. The important dates. Alita, there's a typo. It says important states.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, there is, again, this is not mandatory, but the district does support attendance at the MASC, MAS joint conference. It's scheduled from November 6 through the 9th, and most folks go a day or two. If folks want to stay overnight, the district supports that, but it's totally voluntary. I will say that if you can, we get the program ahead of time. If you just want to go down for a day, look at what is scheduled. I've been going, I think, I went three out of four years, and every year, I find something that is enlightening and different best practice from other districts, and they always have a session on the law. So, think about that, but that's when it's scheduled for this year. Our budget workshop is scheduled for January 25. That's a Saturday, and that's the meeting at which the different departments and school leadership comes and talks to, talk to us about the things that they are interested in for their budget. And that's usually 9:00 or 8:00?
Generally, I think we start at 8:00, too. We try to finish up around 12:00, 12:00 and 1:00.
Yes. Okay. Alita, could you add the time tentatively, like 8:00 to 12-ish, or 8-ish to 12-ish? Or 8 to 12? Okay. And then, for the last two years, we've had a superintendent evaluation workshop. This year, we had it before a regularly scheduled meeting. What we try to do sometimes, if workshops are, are necessary, is to hold them before a regularly scheduled meeting. Right now, this is the only one we anticipate, and so, that would be April 8, the day of a regularly scheduled meeting, and we'd start at 5:00. So, you can plan on that. Then, for other planning purposes, the town meetings, May 4. Town elections, May 11. And then, the graduation for 2020 is June 14. Again, not mandatory that folks attend, but it's a, it's a wonderful ceremony. I can tell you that it does not go on and on and on and on. It is done so well, and the students speak, and it's just a really wonderful ceremony. And this year, it's at 12:30, I think.
I'd have to defer to Principal Ed.
Or not?
Yeah, 12:30.
Okay. Isn't, has it been like in the morning before, like 10?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. I'm aware that it's...
Maybe I got there early. I don't know. But anyway, it's good to put that in your calendar. All right. And then, it is advisable, when we get into budget time, for school committee members to attend the FinCom meetings in their respective towns. And we get a, it's during their, a regularly scheduled meeting, where Pat Maroney and Brooke attend to discuss our budget with them. So, if you're, and when we have the exact date, we will provide those to you. Now, again, not mandatory, but if you can go, it's, it's, it's a good thing to do. So, any other questions about the, the calendar? Okay. Does anyone want to move to accept the Neshoba Regional School Committee, 2019 to 2020 school calendar, a school committee calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I will add that, once we know the composition of the subcommittees, then we will ask folks to send their meetings. We do something similar. Each subcommittee will set their meetings for the year by consensus, and we'll add those. So, there'll be more colors on this in Valma. Yes?
Can I just make a comment, too, with regards to the MESSMASC conference? It's really, I just want to spring from what Chairman Codien said. It's really a great conference. If you can... It's really a great conference. If you can sneak away for a day or two, it's really, really worth your while to go down. We do need to know well in advance, so if, if you're gonna stay overnight, get some rooms booked up so fast.
So we get a discount.
Yes.
We get a very, very special, which the elderly appreciate.
And you know, it's, because so many people come from all over Massachusetts. It's so well attended.
Yeah.
You'll be with thousands of people, but it is fantastic. So if you have any interest in going, please let Alita know ASAP so that we can make sure that we've got rooms.
And then the folks that attend, in a, in a subsequent meeting, the folks who attend share the workshops that they went to. And if there are any new ideas that bubble up, we'd like to hear about it.
It's a, it's a great time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think we are ready for our student presentation.
So we'll turn it over to Principal Dita Minico and Mr. Fortiani are here. And I am so delighted that our robotics team is here. Members of our team are here tonight. Thank you so much. And this is Hal. And I know there's a little story there about his name. You folks had an amazing school year this year with robotics and we are so proud of your efforts. I'd also let you know that when our Commissioner Riley was here, he stopped in to visit with them on our March 8th day. And I don't think he tried to do anything. I think he was just quite curious to take a look at it from a distance. But the kids showed him how he works and I understand they have no balls to throw tonight. They're out of balls to throw.
Balls, I guess. Alright, have to buy some new ones.
We'll have to buy some new ones, yes. So.
Yeah. Let me just tighten this up. So I mean, I don't know how much you guys are familiar, this is, the first robotics competition. It was a worldwide competition that was founded by Dean Kamen like 25 or 30 years ago.
He signed our robot.
He, he put in a robot. We've been involved since 2006 and, you know, I think of us as the best and the brightest. So every year in January, they invent a new game for the robots to play. It's, you know, a contrived game. You gotta, you know, do whatever the game is. This year, the game is called Deep Space. And what we have to do is we have to pick up these hatches and then we have to place them on a rocket ship and then the balls are the cargo. And you have to put the balls in the cargo and then you gotta climb up onto the platform at the end. Anyway, every year the game is, is contrived and we play it. And we have about six weeks to design from scratch. So you have to start from scratch every year. You can't reuse any parts from the year before. So this robot is all designed by, by the kids. We have our own CAD machines. We have our own CNC router. So all the parts on this machine are made in-house. Well, I mean, you know, we buy wheels like this, but the whole thing is designed and made in-house. And we spent on this robot about $15,000. The district gives us $5,000 out of the district budget and then we fundraise an additional between $20,000 and $25,000 to run the team. This robot won technical awards at three of our events this year. We're, we're pretty well known. In fact, there's a big forum. You know, everything has a forum on the internet. There's a big forum called Chief Delphi. And on, one of the things on Chief Delphi is this poster called New England Forecast. And what they do is they give scouting reports for the various events. And so we compete in New England district and then based on how you do in your district events, you can qualify for the New England championships. And here's what New England Forecast said about us, the scouting report before New England championships. It said, "This robot is one of the most captivating in New England, both on and off the field. In typical robo-chief fashion, their space robot is a masterpiece of design and machining and a smooth operation as it quickly fills a rocket is beautiful. Their zippy slide drives allow them to juke out defenders and line up quickly in any cargo bay as well as avoid their alliance partner or trying to score in tight, in quarters. With ability to score both hatches and cargo at all heights and quickly climb, Team 1768 is an excellent addition to any alliance. If you have a chance to check out this robot in person, don't miss out." So we're pretty well known around New England now as a team that builds these really high-quality robots. To put in perspective, Raytheon is one of our sponsors. So we brought this robot to Raytheon to, to display and a bunch of their engineers. So you know, you're dealing with all engineers who kind of know what they're looking at. And one of the guys said to me, "You know how much it would cost us," meaning Raytheon, "to build that machine?" I, he says, "Probably about a million and a half dollars." And I looked, he goes, "I'm serious." Because we put together a team of nine engineers. They would work for nine months. They'd design the parts, then they'd go down to fabrication. We're paying all these guys top dollars. So, you know, just to kind of put it in perspective, this is a real, a real machine. So we'll do a little demonstration. I'll stop talking. And, 'cause I have no voice anyway. And I have four of our senior members, graduating seniors, Nathaniel, Tyler, Rachel and Andy, they put in enormous amount of time and energy into this program. And hopefully they're gonna tell you that they got a little bit out of it as well. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to them. But before I do, I'm gonna say that we have to look at the overnight field trip policy and get rid of this commercial carrier thing because it's, it's gonna kill us budget-wise. So I just throw that.
But Mr. Fortiani, I, I do want to say though that I think you were very well supported this year with that.
Oh, no, you guys, no. No, no, absolutely. This year was awesome. If next year could be the same, it'd be awesome again.
Well, I don't know about that. I, I understand. But if, if you recall that his was one of the field trips and that. And I think one of the things that we ran into, of course, is the fact, remember we had to have that special meeting for that field trip and we need to take a look at that policy and change that because we're gonna have winning teams, like we have a winning team in front of us right now. And so we need to do, make a policy change on that too. So, yeah. Thank you.
Should we, excuse me, should we stand up so we can see what it does?
Do whatever you want.
No, are we gonna miss anything if we're sitting?
We're just gonna do the, the really most basic thing. We don't have a lot of space. But I invite anyone, whoever wants to see more action.
Which you can move, okay.
You can, you can look us up on the Blue Alliance. It's Blue Alliance. Just Google Blue Alliance and it'll bring you, it's a repository for all things First Robotics. And we're team number 1768. They have videos of all a bunch of our matches. Or just email me anytime, make an appointment and come over and we'll, we'll drive it around for you and give you a full, a full tour, which, you know, takes more than just a few minutes. So I'll leave you to these guys.
All right. So that's the pneumatics. This robot uses a mixture of pneumatics and just regular motors to drive the motion on it. So it was, it was designed to play the game, which where you had to place these hatches at three different heights. You also had to be able to place the balls at three different heights. We wanted to integrate the two mechanisms into one. And I guess we can show you how it works. So it's important for speed that these fingers actually close automatically, so we don't have a button for that. Right now, so right, right now we have a button for it. There are sensors on here and it senses it. We 3D printed these sensor mounts and they, they sense this. It was a challenge to find one that senses the clear button. Look out there. Raise, raise the elevator. So.
Motion lights.
It's not gonna go that high, but I might. It won't matter. So for the past couple of years, last year and this year, it was prudent to make an elevator. It seemed like the most effective way to address the challenge, although not the only way. But our team built a very good elevator last year, probably one of the best in the world. It was incredibly solid and very smooth. So we just built a very similar one this year. And it's also really good. Go ahead.
What height is that, Tyler?
Uh, that's 40 inches.
Are you sure?
Yep.
You too.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna tell you how you control it. There's, there's more.
Yeah, so we have remote controllers. They're called Talons. And so we use a, it's called Motion Magic, which is a type of motion profiling that allows us to get within half an inch of any set height for the elevator.
So our entire robot is coded from scratch in Java?
Yeah. I have to say that FIRST is an excellent opportunity for any kid. Like if you're looking to be an engineer and you are in high school and you're not doing this program, you are making a mistake because you will not do anything as useful in your four years. You just won't. It won't, it won't be as good. I know that if I, if I didn't do this, I most likely would have lost focus and become bored in school. And this really kept helping to keep me on track. It was a really big deal.
Yeah, so I did FIRST, I've done FIRST for four years. So that's kind of probably what guided me to go into engineering. So, yeah, so I'll be going off to mechanical engineering next year. And I know we're all doing STEM-related fields.
And it may seem counterintuitive, but all the hours put in actually ends up with us being more motivated, getting better grades in school and like just doing, being more captain allies.
Yeah, I mean, if I wasn't doing this, I'd be playing video games. That's just how it is. But instead, I learned how to use 3D modeling software, how to use CNC machines, how to manually initial, how to manually machine things on a lathe and a milling machine. So I learned about the whole process of building any, any machine, building both the design, the design process of it in a computer, then the actual fabrication of each individual part. Because like Mr. Fortiani was saying, we actually make everything on this robot. We didn't buy this cross member here. We took a piece of 16th inch aluminum stock that was very long. We cut it to length and then we set it up in our CNC router and cut the lightning pattern into it as well as all the holes that we needed in order to rip it, everything together. And obviously that would be impossible if we couldn't design it in software first. And then if we couldn't program it to do anything that we wanted, that would, it'd be useless. So it's really a three-legged stool and we learned how to draw all of it.
I think it kind of speaks to how important FIRST is because they offer like thousands of, not, if not millions, I don't know how much they offer, of dollars for seniors to, for college. They offer like a lot of scholarships for, because of FIRST, because they know how much of a leg up it gets people in college in terms of design and like learning tools and even like skilled like teamwork and working with people. So it's definitely huge.
Yeah, it's really just a great learning experience. Like everything that I've learned about computers and programming, I've learned through this team.
Just working with electrical team, mechanical team, and the control team. And then making the robot that the drive team that has to use in the actual matches and cooperate with other teams in order to actually win is, it's a lot of cooperation in different ways. It's really beneficial.
To quote one of the co-founders of the organization, "It's a cooperation." If your teammates don't work, then that's no good because you have to play with them. And they're, they will be your opponents at some point. You wanna grab a hatch and throw it?
Oh, throw the hatch. We get a red card. You get a red card for throwing the hatch.
We are software limited. We're not. They don't. Raise it up a little bit. We should raise the elevator a little bit higher.
Yeah, all the way up.
We start, we put Rob here because we, we put a hole through the roof ceiling. Rob is here.
And he'll take care of it.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing above it. Yes. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna throw it.
Should we be ducking?
No. It's forceful, but it's not that forceful. It's a pretty good projectile motion problem, actually.
Take out that mic?
It might take out the mic. Anyway, that's, that's how it places the hatch onto the, because there's Velcro and there's Velcro on here. So it pushes it against it and then retracts the fingers and brings it back. And it's very, it's a really effective and clean way of placing the hatch. You'll see a lot of, I mean, there were a lot of really good teams that had a much more. And you watch them and they are very fast and they do place the hatch. But ours were always clean and well-placed.
A lot faster than that when we're having all our sensors. We have a driver station, so we didn't bring that because it's kind of large. But it's kind of cool. It's like a little arcade.
Yeah. And the, the amount of actual design expertise that goes into building something like this is a lot. We have some help from mentors and a lot of help from people who have done this before. So like, like seniors, like I, I came in onto this team freshman year knowing absolutely nothing. I mean, I could build a Lego robot. I did FLL. But I, I, I came onto this team not really being able to do anything and being more or less just an unskilled set of hands. And I'm now leaving confident that if I had to, I could build this whole robot by myself.
Okay.
Where are you guys going next year?
I'm going to WPI.
I'm going to Northeastern.
I'm going to Cornell.
Going to Empress College.
It's weird.
Empress College.
Yeah, Huskies.
Impressive, very impressive.
Good luck, guys.
So I just, a couple of quick questions and a comment. Now, I, I didn't go to any of your matches this year, but man, they're intense. If you've not been to one of these matches, they are intense. And the skill sets that you need to, to participate and compete is unbelievable. So now I know that you were in New Jersey and you've been in Maine, right? So just talk to us a little bit about those two experiences quickly.
So we went down to New Jersey. There, so the way that FIRST works is that you have a certain number of competitions within your district and you gain points towards your district score. And if you score high enough, you get to go to regionals and then if you score high enough, or you, you get to go to districts. And then if you score high enough at districts, you go to Worlds, World Championships, which is international competition with teams from the whole world. But we went to New Jersey specifically because a lot of the really good teams gain a leg up by going to an out-of-district competition where it doesn't matter to them. So for us, it's a practice competition, which lets us find all of our really glaring problems.
So nothing works the first time.
Nothing works the first time, although some things did work the first time. Which was pretty, which was pretty cool.
It was for us.
Yeah.
And then Maine, and then you went to Maine, and then you went to.
And so Maine and.
A competition in Boston.
Yeah, Maine and Boston were our two district events. So those counted. We had to, we had to dwell at those. And we did.
We were finalists at both.
Yeah, we were finalists at both and we won the quality award at.
Every single.
At all, at all of our, at our out-of-state and also our two, our, both of our in-district competitions, which is a relatively prestigious award, which we win a lot because our robots are of high quality. And we made it to districts. We were in 14th place in the district out of four hundred teams.
Yeah, 13th, I think.
13th?
Out of two, two.
And then, yeah.
And then this group had to meet to give you permission to go to the, the big one, which was in Detroit.
Good stuff. I'm glad you let us go.
Well, actually, I was just hoping you could speak to that, that's all.
Yeah, so it is, it's, it is amazing to go to Detroit or any, or just to go to World Championships at all because the caliber of teams that you can go and see there is incredible. I know that one of the teams there, I honestly had never heard about before. But they had one of the most amazing mechanisms for manipulating game pieces that I had ever seen. That would strike force, 2767. Their robot was incredible.
Two time championships.
Yeah, I mean, they're really good, but also they're really good. And their robot was incredible. They didn't win though.
Well, we're really proud of, we're really proud of you folks. Like you've just done a great job. You've had a fantastic year. So let's see if the school committee members have any questions of you and then we'll, we'll let you go. School committee members, any questions from you?
I wonder, I don't know if you already said this, forgive me, but it's purely after school, the club?
And before it, and on the weekends, and.
School vacations and.
But do you find that, are there classes during the day that contribute to this?
There's, there's a robotics next class, but it's useless for this.
It's a totally different organization.
Different technologies?
It's just useless for this. It's, if, if you want to learn robotics, you shouldn't take that class.
They're different calvers. One of them's more, I guess, an introduction that wouldn't, that's like the class at school that maybe wouldn't help you as much in college. Versus this is hands-on design, fabrication, coding, things like that. And it's something where it's hands-on, six, you only have six weeks to build this. I don't know if you mentioned that. So all this design, manufacturing and coding was done in six weeks. So you kind of learn how to manage your time. You learn so many skills and that's why it's something that colleges really value.
How many of you, you four seniors, are you the only seniors?
There's one more.
One more, Ben Brown. He did a lot of our CNC router work. He's, he's awesome. He just keeps working.
And how many others in addition to you guys?
So there are 22 students on the team, 22 of us. Maybe about eight. The core group is like eight to 13 people.
More than eight, more like 13.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. Principal Dina Menico, thank you. Mr. Forniani, thank you so much. And congratulations. It was just a banner year for you. We're just really, really proud of you. Thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. It's always really special when you get to see the work that the group is doing, that you're supporting throughout the course of the year and you take a look and it's just so amazing.
It's amazing.
Make a good computer science class. Seriously.
No, I can't even get my head around that. I, I, it's just amazing that, and, and Mr. Forniani has been doing this, I don't know how long, but a long, long time, so a lot of. Fourteen? Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a testament to the amount of time that we spent just this year on this robot, probably toward the end of the season. Most of us are getting up to around six hundred hours spent on this thing.
Wow.
So.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You can't own that trouble.
Okay, um, the, um, school committee chair update, just a couple of things. We will be organizing new subcommittees for the year. And if you go, um, on a line under the school committee tab, you'll see it's an older version of our, um, our school committee manual, but in it around page fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, there are all the committees and what the responsibilities are. So I'm going to ask folks to send me their preference for the committee that they would like to be on. And I, I can't promise that you'll get your first choice. But at our next meeting on June fifth, I'll bring together the plan and then we will vote on it. In addition to, um, we only have two folks from Bolton and so sometimes a Bolton, and we try to have, um, a person from each town on the committee. So the, the, the three very active committees are policy, budget warrant, and personnel subcommittee. And then there are advisories and liaisons. So Steve, you're the liaison to the Mabel Hale or the advisory. You don't do that?
I have been that since the first year, that's all.
Oh, my goodness, they've been rattleless. They haven't had a.
I think they, I don't think they have any more money.
I was gonna say, I think the funds are.
Has that recall, has that recall the principal, the principal that year asked?
Okay, we'll find another thing for you to do on the committee, so don't worry about it. No, so sometimes we all, um, do like double duty, whether it's two committees or, or as a liaison. This year I was on the personnel subcommittee and I was the liaison to the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. So, um, look over the list. Um, things that are highlighted in like a tan are committees that are inactive, but we left them there in case they would come active. You can see what they are. So if you could get me that information by next, um, Wednesday, I think that's the twenty-ninth, give me a week or before that. But that would be the deadline and if I don't hear from folks, I'll reach out. Okay, any questions about subcommittees or, you know, preferences?
Sorry, are you taking, are you taking request for preferences right now?
Not right now, no.
If you could just get them to Kathy, that would be great. And then she can, then she decides.
And if, but if you have any questions, I can answer. But look over, um, on the school committee manual that's posted on the website, what the different pieces are. Leah.
I wonder, um, are the subcommittees set in stone or are there new subcommittees that form at the beginning of the year?
Basically, the three that I mentioned are the, the ones that predominate. This year we had a communication subcommittee and they developed, um, a communication tree. And that will be coming forward to the school committee for consideration, but I don't, I don't think we need to continue with it next year. So, um, I would say those are the predominant ones. At one point we had a technology advisory committee, but that was before. There's been, been a lot of really positive focus changes to, um, the technology, um, program. And, um, so we, we don't have liaisons to that anymore. But I don't know if you've looked already at the manual and the policies.
I have. I, at the, at the.
Subcommittees, yeah.
I have, yeah. And I just wonder if we, if at some point along the way we think that there's a gap, can the school committee create a new one?
As long as it's within the purview of the school committee. At one point, there was a suggestion that we have a curriculum committee, but that's not in our lane. So we didn't move forward with that. But yes, if, if a need arises and it's within our purview, then most certainly. Okay?
Yes. So I noticed that most members were on more than one.
Yes.
Subcommittee. Do you want our first and second choice or will we just be, um, because even some people who were three, it might have been two subcommittees and it might have been. I was thinking of, of Steve's advisory, maybe a liaison.
Yes, yes.
And, and I'm thinking there are only two of us in both.
Um, yeah, well, let, if there are, if, just let me know whatever your preferences are if there are more than one. And, um, um, yeah, and I'll put them together. By our bylaws, it's the, the chair that makes the, the determination about the subcommittees. But it's, it's helpful to know what folks, um, what their preferences are. And typically the subcommittees meet once a month. Or you don't have to meet once a month. If you have nothing to meet about, I know this sounds ridiculous, but believe me, I've been to meetings, I'm sure we all have. Why are we meeting? So, but it's the, 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 the subcommittee itself will determine when the meetings are, the time of the meetings. We generally hold the meetings here and Brooke, I think you attend the.
I attend quite a few of them. I don't attend all of them, but I attend quite a few of them. Policy, for example, I only came in to if they needed me because Dorothy Presser was overseeing policy. So you, you didn't need the superintendent and MASC in there, so. But otherwise, no, if, if I'm needed at those or, you know, wanted to be sitting in on them, then I do.
Okay. No, I'm very sensitive to the fact that there were two. I think Mike Horish was on, um, policy and PSC. And then, yeah, and then, yeah, the personnel subcommittee and policy. No, he was, um, like a liaison to a safety committee that maybe met once and I, yeah, but I think that that's a.
I think he started down the road, but then I think he felt it was too much and so I think he pulled back.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, any other questions? Okay, uh, we talked about the June nineteenth meeting and, um, our student representative Isabella Sonia is not here. So we will go right to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Um, so Todd and I will, um, kind of go between the items and I think we'll start, Todd, with you first for the year end.
Okay, thanks. Um, so this Friday marks the year end for our professional development, our professional development series for the year. This Friday on the twenty-fourth, we have that early release day. Uh, so we're grateful to have one more early release PD session for the year. The focus this Friday will be on student transitions. This additional early release day provides our educators time to discuss and identify transitional needs of all of our students across all grade levels and how they can best be supported as they move through their grade levels. This PD session will be taking place at each school so that teams of teachers can be working together. This ties in with our renewed focus next year on social emotional learning and also ties into the work that we did at the S3 Academies this year that we spoke about at our last meeting. So we are excited, um, for that work on Friday and we're excited on how that will transfer, um, into the new year. And we are already in planning motion for professional development series for next year and we have some exciting things to come. So we are very excited about continuing the work that we did this year and having a very similar, um, day-long, uh, day of professional development next year in March as well.
Okay, I have a question. Um, do you conduct an evaluation of the, um, the program? And can you, if you do, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yep. So we, after every PD session, whether it's full day or whether it's an early release day, we do garner feedback from all teachers. This being the last one, we will do a year-long survey as well. I can say too, particularly we will, we offer ones, uh, for the early release days that we do just for the two hours. But then on the, the day-long, March day that we had, it's a more extensive one because we have people coming in from various districts to offer workshops. We have a keynote speaker that was tied to a book read. So, um, the feedback that came back on that March day was so positive that we really want to replicate that kind of exhibition again for next year and plan on doing that and getting that feedback already and knowing where we want to go next year. We plan to make it that much bigger so that we can bring in more districts and make it a little bit bigger for next year. So the feedback has been great this year and then we'll also do the feedback again on Friday from, from participants.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is on MCAS, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System is, uh, winding down. We're drawing closer to the close of another testing season at all of our schools. They've had a real successful testing session and real hats off to our technology department and our teaching and learning department who really worked hard to train all of our teachers and all of our administrators on the new next generation MCAS test because every test now is online. So, um, our one-to-one Chromebook initiative has really helped with that and we have Chromebooks in the hands of all, um, students, grade six through twelve. The training for teachers for students has been, really been streamlined this year. So we've got, uh, finishing up mathematics testing this weekend and then we have one high school test left, the science test for the first week in June. So really successful, no glitches really in, in, in any of our systems or our technology. Uh, we've been really successful with the MCAS this year, so.
I think we were really structured too and I think that that helped us out enormously. We knew exactly what team players were and what buildings and who was doing what. It was, it was a, a real concerted collective collaborative effort.
And just, I mean, just even from opening up, you know, chat, chat tables and, and from all of our technology people and our administrators and our teachers. If somebody had an issue in a room, they immediately could get right on there and deploy somebody, uh, to make sure that they could nip it in the bud.
So it was instant.
Yeah.
Instant communication.
Uh, really successful there. Um, and then finally, just a final reminder on our digital safety night, which will take place this coming Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, at Florence Sawyer in the cafeteria from six to seven PM. We've done a lot of outreach on that. We've got, uh, interactive presentation for parents or all community members and it really is focused on digital safety and students' digital footprint and what that means in staying safe in an online environment. The program presentation proves to be, um, really interactive, well differentiated and to offer parents a variety of resources that they can team up with us at home and helping keeping our kids all safe online. So that'll be Tuesday.
The other thing I want to mention too is, uh, we did a, a bit of a pilot project this year with our ITS. We have two middle school ITS gentlemen, um, one from Bolton and one from Lancaster that we pulled in as an experiment this year. Two days of their six-day cycle. And part of their efforts are, are what you're seeing in this as well. And you'll see, see that come up a little bit more this evening too. But, um, that worked very, very well for us and it helped to give a little bit different structure to our T and L group and in this particular area and they were also able to help. So hats off to, to Gary and Greg for their efforts this year. Um, I just have one or two quick things. Hale Community Dinner, we had that the other night and that was, that was fun. That was just a lot of fun. This is the first time I think that Hale's had a community dinner like that and, um, I, I just, Leah, I don't know if you were able to go to it or not, but it was just, it was well-attended. Uh, special thanks to our food services people who were there and, and prepared a lovely meal and it was just fun. And the children were running all around and everybody was playing and the parents were out visiting and it was all free. Tom Poole, you know, our director of food services, did a great job of getting all kinds of free food for us for that night and it was just a great night. Um, the administration sent out some beautiful invitations ahead of time and it's just, I was, actually, you went as well.
I went, yeah, I went and I actually sat with Elaine and her family. Her daughter, I, I, this is totally not related to this, but I, I just got such a kick out of it. Her daughter is like Midi Elaine and I met her and she says to me, "I, I got my paperwork in today for kindergarten." Right, she's listening, like, "Oh, your mother's daughter." So cute.
She was very quick to show me the brand-new pink leggings that she was wearing.
She had me done. But cute, no, and very, again, very well done. The building looks incredible.
Doesn't it? So clean and, yeah.
No, and even the, the, the way the cafeteria is, is, the decor, the decoration, everything is nice and it was such a nice thing. And, um, I got there and it didn't look like there were a lot of people there and I guess there were kids that were at a, um, a trappy that were coming later. So, um.
There were people streaming all the way in.
Oh, yeah, no, that's great, but yeah.
Yeah, it was great. So anyway, that was just, and, and that was, uh, for us, I think it was a bit of a pilot project to see how it would work and because it worked so well, I think you'll see us do something a little bit different next year and, uh, bring in our other communities on that. Um, the school year end, of course, it's hard to believe that we're talking about this. I know that we mentioned before that we'd frozen the budget already and that, I just want to be clear, that doesn't mean that, um, nobody can buy anything from here to the end of the year. But it's a little bit more complicated now when somebody wants to buy something, you have to really know for sure that you really need this right now because we're wrapping up. We're making sure that this is going to be a smooth year end. We did a great job last year with it. We've done this every year. We generally freeze the budget around March, April, in that time period. And it just helps us really, um, land a smooth year end. Pat will probably speak to that a little bit more. The schools are also, as you heard Todd talking earlier, that transition meetings are happening throughout the district right now. And then on Friday afternoon, it'll be even that much more. So we anticipate a very smooth year end, but I think again, it's our third year of doing this. It feels very structured. E- e- everybody knows what to do, what this looks like and so we're anticipating a smooth year end and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brooke or for Todd? Thank you, thank you. Okay. So we have our digital learning update?
We do. So, um, I'm going to talk a little bit tonight just in terms of where we're at in terms of digital learning in the district. Thank you, Alita. And I know I've spoken on this topic several times during the year and I kind of want to just give a sense of where we were at, where we've gone this year and certainly, um, where we're going. And I mentioned the MCAS testing earlier and how that's all online and how our one-to-one Chromebook initiative has really helped with that process. But, yeah, in terms of the topics I want to talk about tonight, I'm going to talk about the technology that we are using in the district. The parent safety night, we also had a parent information night and talk a little bit about where we want to go with offering those kinds of series and those information sessions for parents in the greater community. Talk a little bit about digital citizenship and also talk about our learn platform, which is a, a, a great new, um, system that we're just, um, really exploring in the teaching and learning department so that we can roll it out at the beginning of next year and then, um, looking ahead, um, in terms of next year in the future with technology. So in terms of this year, uh, at this point, every student in grade six through twelve is now equipped with a, a one-to-one Chromebook device. We had spent this year really focused on the middle school. You know, when I, when I came in the beginning of last summer, the middle school, there were some students who had Chromebooks and there were some students who didn't and we really wanted to roll it out, uh, to our sixth graders. And so we came, uh, concocted a plan that, um, our sixth graders, students would have their Chromebooks in carts for the first trimester of the year. And then once they got acclimated and once they had lessons in digital citizenship and lessons in taking care of their device, they would then be able to take them home in a one-to-one capacity and be able to bring them to home and bring it, uh, home to school. That was very successful. Our principals had some autonomy there in, in figuring out where their students were and where their school was. But most students had their Chromebooks taken home with them by the Christmas holiday. Um, and that's been really successful, um, this year. So, um, in terms of next year, we will roll out the same thing with our sixth graders. They will spend time with their Chromebooks that are located in the carts and then again, they will take them home, um, a little bit later in the year so they can get acclimated not only to the middle school environment, but also that one-to-one device. So that was very successful in terms of our middle school rollout. We still have classroom Chromebook carts in grades three through five, so those carts are available in classrooms that kids can use on a daily basis. And we can continue to use iPads, um, in the kindergarten, first and second grade and that also has to do with fine motor skills. Those iPads are a lot easier for our younger kids to use than, than the Chromebooks in the keys. So we continue to, to use that model. Like I said, the middle school had a strong focus this year on preparing all students and transitioning our grade students to independent use of the Chromebook. I also want to highlight the high school. We had a lot of students that were, uh, logging tech tickets, um, prior to us setting up a help desk and a tech help desk in the media center. So we have a tech help desk in the media center now that's manned with, um, an administrator and a technology expert, if you will. And so students are able to bring their Chromebooks there and either get a battery charge or have somebody kind of identify what their problem might be before a student actually logs a tech ticket that goes to our technology department. They often can troubleshoot the problem before it even goes to our technology department. And I reported out some of this data about halfway through the year, that the amount of tech tickets were down astronomically by students and it also. of tech tickets were down astronomically by students and it also kind of gives some onus and some ownership to the students to have to bring it to an adult and say, "This is what's wrong with my Chromebook," versus just logging a tech ticket and, you know, having so many tech tickets for our technology department to deal with on a daily basis. So, that was highly successful.
Just a question. So, the tech help desk, is there, are there hours for it?
There are hours for it, so this year they ran from the first thing in the morning to lunchtime. A lot of the feedback that we got from students was they would like to have that expanded to all day. So, the person who was writing that in the media center was only there until lunchtime. I do know that some media center staff also then helped out later in the afternoon when there was some additional need.
And you referred to an admin, is that the person who?
The gentleman who actually oversees that.
And is that an employee of our district?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And there was somebody else you mentioned with the admin, no, was there?
He's the one who helps there. There are some students who do help out with the tech desk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was going to be my question. I was going to say, is there any plan to have kids volunteer and start biking?
Yeah, there certainly is. Because it was a pilot year, we certainly found that with certain people in the building, our media center, those students who wanted to help out for sure. So, we certainly want to expand that because it's been so helpful and so helpful to our technology department this year, just reducing the amount of the tech tickets that they were getting on a daily basis.
And again, I want to say it was a pilot process this year or it was an experiment to try it and we just thought it worked really, really well and so now we feel that we can broaden our ways a little bit in that area.
Yeah, a great opportunity for the kids to.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Troubleshoot tech.
So, I already mentioned our digital safety night, obviously, which is taking place on Tuesday in the Florence Sawyer cafeteria from 6:00 to 7:00. Like I said, the focus is on digital safety and digital footprint, but we also had a parent series earlier in the year in October, what was really just information on our one-to-one Chromebook program and how we were rolling it out and how students would be using that. So, this is kind of the second in a series for that. And really kind of by surveying people and surveying staff and students and understanding that people really want to know about safety and what online safety looks like, we get a lot of questions around social media and how you are, we are using social media or not using social media and one's digital footprint and how we're using that in the classrooms. So, that will take place on Tuesday. A really good resource up here, CommonSenseMedia.org is one we will be using. It's an excellent resource for parents, it's a resource we use in the district and I know Glenn and Gary will be talking about that specifically on Tuesday night.
Those are the ITS gentlemen I was speaking of earlier.
And then, you know, it opens up us up to thinking about next year and we really are, these guys, as well as teaching and learning, are thinking about, okay, what's next and we really wanted to continue to develop this kind of parent series or community series. The feedback we're getting is that parents now want to know how to use the Google Suite, like their kids are using the Google Suite. They want to be able to look at Google Classroom, get into Google Classroom, see what kids are doing, look at the work that they're doing. So, we have another one in the works for the fall to offer another series for parents and community members, really open to anybody on how can I help my students at home by utilizing and knowing the Google Suite as well as they do. So, that's kind of where we're going with our parent series. Digital citizenship continues to be really, really important. We continue to require every student who has a Chromebook and every student in the district to participate in a digital safety and a digital citizenship workshop at the start of the year before they start using their Chromebooks in school. Also, the new social studies standards that are coming down in the teaching and learning department, we have a committee forum with the social studies standards and we want to kind of crosswalk those with the digital literacy standards because within the social studies standards, active citizenship is a major component of that and an active citizenship project is required with those new social studies standards. So, we see a real natural transfer and crossing there with digital learning standards and the new social studies standards in the classroom and a focus on citizenship in an online world. And we have a tremendous amount of professional development and curriculum planning going on with these new standards in teaching and learning and in all of our classes and we can, will continue to use Glenn and Gary next year as our ITS specialists. They've been going out to schools all year long, they've been offering technology tastings at each of our middle schools, with a strong focus there. So, there's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm around it, I think. One thing that I'm really excited about is this Learn Platform. Prior to coming here, I used this in a different, in another district. We're thrilled to get it for next year. It's a way to enhance safety, it's a way to enhance privacy and we will acquire the Learn Platform over the summer. We've already done some training with our teaching and learning staff on the Learn Platform and what it does is it tracks the usage of all of our digital software and all of our digital applications that people are using within the NRSD network. It allows teachers to assess the software, assess the applications, so there's actually assessments and rubrics that are tied to each of the digital applications and software that they use and they're able to then give their feedbacks. So, we can, teachers can go in, administrators can go in and look at a particular piece of software or application in the learning environment and see how other teachers all around the globe are using it, how they assess it, what they're using it for. It also allows teachers to go in and see how many of their students are using it and if they're using it authentically or not. So, it allows us to go in and take a look at, wow, this application that we're piloting and bought for this one year, are we using it with fidelity? And if we are, then it informs our decision to say, "We want to continue to purchase this." If we're not, it's easier for us to say, "You know what, this doesn't seem to be working for our district." So, it allows us to pilot something in one year and then really retrieve a lot of information that's very helpful. It also helps us kind of look at, what is the time on learning? How many hours are students, you know, spending in the classroom or spending on these particular apps? It also informs us if people are able to actually get through our system and get on social media and access Facebook and we can see how many people have actually accessed Facebook when they actually shouldn't be getting through that firewall here. So, it's a really, really good system, it's very informative and it offers us a lot of data in terms of those kinds of purchasing decisions for curriculum that is now going online. So, we're excited to pilot that and we will be training a lot of administrators coming this summer and then what we'll do is we'll get teachers trained on it and how to use it as well.
Leah?
Very quick question. You're probably monitoring the Chromebook usage, I imagine, but are you also monitoring teacher usage?
Yes. Yeah.
Every, yes, we monitor it all. And in fact, this isn't a teacher, but I mean, to go back to the student component, but quite frankly, if this was happening, which it wouldn't be, but if it was happening with students, with teachers, we'd pick it up too. If something comes through the system that we flag because we've got so many filters on our system and it's inappropriate, it lands on his desk right away. Our IT department immediately brings it down, exactly what it is, we've got the screen, it's not even a screenshot, it's like the real thing and he has it there and then, you know, we deal with it from there, wherever it needs to go. If it's, obviously, if it's a student, it goes directly to the principal. There was one time when I actually met with a student and the principal together. So, I mean, yeah, we consistently, that doesn't mean that some things can't maybe get through the cracks, but you can see that we're working harder and harder at making sure that we've got a good handle on this, so.
Yeah, our technology department, I mean, Succi meets with me weekly and here's a weekly report that comes and gets on my desk once a week and he'll walk me through the report and I can actually call a principal and say, "Hey, we need to have a conversation with this student about this particular," so I can see it's that specific. He's also been very, very good at looking at programs that also can detect, you know, who might be trying to come into our system and, you know, get in those kinds of things. So, it's been very, very informative, but we get very detailed reports from our technology department. It's very impressive. And then, just in terms of looking ahead, I think we've done a lot with digital learning this year. We're going to continue to focus on digital safety, the citizenship and particularly media literacy. Media literacy is also a really hot topic right now, particularly in high schools. A lot of high schools are offering courses, offering electives in media literacy. I think I've mentioned particularly after, you know, the politics in the 2016 election and things that can go on social media that may be true, that may be not true and really teaching kids how to find credible resources, those kinds of things. We're going to continue to focus on that at each grade level, continued coaching in the classrooms from our ITS folks because we had a successful year, parent series to continue with workshops in the Google Suite and then some. We'll continue to solicit feedback from the community and parents on what more they want in the technological environment. And we continue to research the best, what we call OERs, or online educational resources. The Learn Platform will help us do that in finding resources that are really strong resources that are online. And then, you know, our commitment to cutting-edge innovative professional development opportunities. Like I said, we're excited about what we're going to bring in for next year and replicate a lot of the things that we did this year through book reads, through keynote speakers, through workshops, through the showcases that we did in our gymnasium in March. We're really excited to hit the ground running next year, so.
We have a very good plan for next year. I'm very excited.
Yeah, we're excited. So, that's what I have for you.
Thank you. Questions, comments for Todd? Elaine?
First, thank you. So, it's been really exciting to watch this develop over the course of the year because it was kind of just like an idea and then there was an outline and now there's more details in it, so it's actually really nice to watch. In that vein, so, technology changes so fast, particularly I was thinking about the digital safety and the media literacy, like it is constantly evolving. So, how do you keep up with that?
Yeah, it's a great question because things are evolving and changing all the time. I think by adding Gary and Greg to our department, where they're constantly being deployed, like Brooke has mentioned, the Apple Tuesdays at the local mall, at the Apple Store, they offer an Apple Tuesdays for teachers.
Just for teachers.
To go and just continue to take in those cutting-edge, what's new, what's the latest kinds of things that we're doing. This year, we deployed a huge team to the MasQ Conference in the fall, down to Gillette Stadium where you're going to get the latest, greatest, cutting-edge.
Everything, that's an amazing conference.
And because we have a digital learning coordinator, Cindy Larson, she's really good about knowing the technology and knowing how to work with it, so I think we've got a great team in place to really stay current, but also know where we need to balance because there's always that kind of a balance. But, I think, I think we are, we are right, right there where we need to be for now, but I think those kinds of opportunities are providing all and getting more and more people out to look at or observe even other schools. What are other schools doing? I think we've got great connections through.
We've done that as well.
So, that's, you're welcome.
Other questions? I just want to say, Todd and Brooke, this is, this is just so impressive. It is very clear and focused, it's easy to understand and in the past, it's been very frustrating to listen to presentations about technology that weren't as focused, directed and connected also with the district improvement plan. And so, I know that we had, we've had over the years, a lot of very talented, boots-on-the-ground people, but I just want to commend your leadership for orchestrating, bringing everybody together. And Succi has been here many years and he really, I think, is able to thrive and shine the way things are now and it's good to see that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's a collective effort, they're a great team. As Brooke has said a number of times, it's the team you have that.
Exactly.
Helps you guys.
But, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a lot of fun.
Great. Okay, old business, the oil tank update.
How exciting is this to go from digital learning to high-tech?
Sorry.
Literally.
From high-tech just about to the lowest tech.
I know. Pat, why don't we have you, bring you to the table as well? So, I'm going to tee this up a little bit, Pat and Rob, and then we'll move forward because we're going to ask you to take a vote tonight and I'm just going to explain just very quickly. So, we have two major projects that we have to deal with at the high school. We have the leach field and this is primarily more for the new members, which I'm sure you've probably heard us talk about a million times anyway, but just for the sense of continuity and making sure that we're on the same page. So, the leach field, we have to deal with at the high school because we're out of compliance and the Department of Environmental Protection basically has worked very well with us and given us appropriate latitude when we begged and boughled for latitude because we weren't ready to move, we didn't know exactly what we were going to do, we had no idea how we were going to pay for this and all that because it's a big project. So, that project, we're going to talk about tonight for costs and I think you'll bring that up, but the focus for us tonight is really the oil tank. And you'll recall, as I know, and Rob, you'll probably go through this again, I think it was the weekend before Thanksgiving, if memory serves me right, that all of a sudden we had no heat in that high school and it was cold. It was so cold. I remember that Thanksgiving football game and I think we were all standing with hot chocolate and extra warmers in our hands and feet just to try and stay warm. It was so cold during that time period and we didn't have heat and that's a panic because that building's a huge building and to have pipes freeze in there, I mean, you're not looking at a $5,000 or $10,000 problem, you're looking at a $100,000 or $200,000 problem if something goes wrong in that building like that. And then we had problems getting a temporary tank in here and then we couldn't get the right size and then for a while there we were basically filling it every, almost every day, if not every day, right? You know, because.
Multiple times a day.
Yeah, multiple times a day for, because it took so much oil during that time period to just heat it, heat the building, so it was a real problem for us. But, with problems come opportunities and so we knew that and so we took a look and Rob's going to speak to you tonight about this, but we took a look at a couple of different things, like is oil the way that we need to stay, is that what we should be doing or do we look at a number of different other ways to heat this building? So, he'll speak to you about that, but then we also have to look and say, "This is a building that we've already submitted an SOI on because we all recognize around this table, well, certainly the past school committee members have recognized that that building is aging out, the deficiencies are too great for us to even put a roof on that building right now." Again, you're not talking even $30,000 or $40,000, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, at what point in time do you say, "We need a new building?" So, we recognize that the time is now that either we do a huge modernization or a new building. So, we've got an SOI submitted, a statement of interest that's submitted with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So, we know that even if we got queued up in December 2019 coming up, because that's when we'll know whether we've been invited in or not, if we haven't been invited in, then you'll have to make a decision, do we submit it again? And you'll probably hear me say at that point in time, we probably need to resubmit again because at some point in time, that building is continuing to deteriorate. So, with all that in mind, we looked and said, "We don't want to spend a huge amount of money on this fix that will probably only have to last us anywhere from five to seven years because MSBA has said that's both the timeline between the time that you get queued up and start." So, you know, you have to think of that too, but the bottom line is we need heat in that building for the next five to seven years or however long it's going to take us to get to that level. So, Rob brought in a number of different vendors, a number of different people to take a look at it. We've had countless conversations on this and so then tonight, he's ready to come and say, "Okay, here's our recommendation." We know now, a bit better number, our numbers are tighter now than they were when we first put in the article on the warrant. You'll recall that we had the article on the warrant and that article was taken up at the last town meeting in both Lancaster and Bolton. And to vote on to say, can we, basically giving us the permission to borrow the money because these are both projects that we can borrow the money for and that's really the best way of doing it. And we've had conversations with our three, our town administrators throughout this process and they have all suggested this is, this is the way that we need to go. Otherwise, that whole amount of money has to go into that budget, right? So, you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, it made sense for us to do a borrowing on it. So, when we put that budget number forward, we had said at that point in time that we didn't expect it to exceed the $600,000 mark and so that's the number that went out to the town budget or to the town meetings. At this point in time now, our numbers are tighter, we've had lots of meetings, you're ready to make a recommendation tonight and then we've got a number that we'll put forward and say, "Here's now the number." Before, we knew it was going to be around that $600,000 number, but now tonight you're going to sit here and say, "This is what we know it's going to cost us now." So, having a long TF on that, Rob, I turn it over to you to pick it up from there.
First, I'd like to welcome the new members to the table. School committee's been very supportive of the facilities department and we're looking forward to working with everybody going forward. Like Superintendent Clenchey said, back in November, we had an issue with the 12,000-gallon oil tank at the high school and we've brought in multiple vendors to look at different fuel types, but we feel that because of the age of the building and not knowing what the building is going to be going forward, we've consulted with Sigma Consultants and they've reached out to MasDEP, local officials, and we're able to move the oil tank to a different part of the building, which is going to drop the price drastically. So, the size of the tank will be a little bit smaller, but it'll be, it'll meet our needs, basically going from a 12,000-gallon tank to a 9,000-gallon tank, so just the refueling occurrence just has to be a little bit more, but that's not an issue. The initial estimates was around a quarter of a million dollars to replace the tank The initial estimates was around a quarter of a million dollars to replace the tank that was, you know, that's in the ground right now. But these initial, these estimates that are coming in right now to move the tank is in between $136,000 and $160,000. And those are estimated on the high side, so there could be even more of a reduction on that. But that's what that stands right.
And we're going to need some funds for retrofitting that.
Retrofit.
So don't think that that's the bottom line, so I want to make sure that they don't get a false sense of security with that number.
The tank itself, you know, will be less than the initial cost of replacing the tank as it sits right now.
And Rob, we've looked at some other fuel, potential fuel alternatives. Do you want to maybe look at propane?
But for building that size, the size tank that we would need to put in would be massive. And trying to find a place to stage that tank, it's, with piping and everything else involved, the cost would have been astronomical, more than replacing the oil tank that's in place now. Another option was compressed natural gas. It comes in on a tube trailer. But because of the footprint we have to work with, where we would have to put those trailers, it would be a very small supply of compressed natural gas. And those trailers would have to be swapped out every single day. And I just, I didn't feel, I didn't feel comfortable knowing that, you know, if we have a major snowstorm or, you know, something happens like that, we can't get a trailer, where does that leave us? It leaves us without fuel at the end of the day. So I think sticking, you know, with the oil, smaller tank, moving it, you know, to the other side of the building, I think would be the best option.
So Pat, just speak to what you're thinking of in terms of total amount then, because we've locked these two projects together, the leach field and the tank, whatever, whatever we were going to do for the fuel, the heating fuel, so.
So I want to tell you first that we're in the middle of the bid process for the leaching field. We should have bids in place, you know, on June 7th, that's the date that they do. So we'll have a really good idea of what that is going to cost. And to be, I would say, in discussing the numbers and what they're estimating those numbers to be, I think $480,000 is a good number to use for borrowing. And I think that's a number that we should put forth to the towns. And that should give us a little bit of wiggle room if we need, you know, depending on how the bids come in.
Well, you need that contingent too.
So the oil tank is estimated at $136,000 to $160,000 plus retrofitting.
Right.
And that's a very liberal estimate. So then the difference between $480,000 and say $160,000 is the cost of the leach field?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, keep going, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's coming in higher because we had already allocated $50,000 for the study.
Right, the original study was at $300,000.
Right.
And we've already paid out $50,000.
$50,000 off that.
And so that, the estimate is still the same as far as leach and field go, so.
So we're saying another $250,000 to do the work? Is that what you're, originally, it was $300,000.
Right.
We've already paid $50,000 for the engineering study.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so what you're saying is now it's another $250,000.
That's correct.
For the construction work.
Right.
Plus approximately $200,000 because you got all the retrofits and everything else.
Yeah.
Approximately $200,000. So we're saying $450,000 and what was the number you just?
$480,000 is the number that we gave because we don't know if we're going to run up against any other issues right now, so it's kind of, oh, sorry.
I understand you have some contingent.
Right, right.
So I think that that's a good number to push forward. And if, obviously, if it comes in less than, and we won't.
Then we don't need to borrow it.
We won't need to borrow as much. Again, we have to put out a request that we borrow that amount in order to cover ourselves.
Anybody else have questions at this point?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
This came up at our town meeting.
It did.
It did, okay. So as a new member of the district committee, the last thing I want to be is pillar read at town meeting. And.
That's why you sit in the back, so you can get out.
Well, anyway, to be perfectly frank, and I'll just say it, I wasn't appreciative of the tone that was directed at our chair at the town meeting. And I'm wondering if you could enlighten me as to the nature of that tone. There were some questions posed to the district committee about whether or not E and D funds should be used for this. And I'm not really sure I got a clear answer around that. So I understand the issue before the town was, is it a bond that we're going out for to borrow for the?
Not at this point, we don't have to go out for a bond because it's less than $500,000.
Okay. But I guess my question is, why so much consternation by our finance committee? What was the issue there?
I don't know.
We don't know because, so thank you very much for saying that and asking that question because honestly, we don't know. But you bring up a great point, if I can just bring for a second or two on some comments with this. So we, I'm just going to step back a little bit. We actually met with all of the FinComs on this, including yours, and had discussion with them and explained. And I think that you're, I wasn't at your Lancaster meeting because I was in Bolton that night. But I understand that your town administrator did a really nice job of explaining this as well. Because our town administrators really understood, A, the need for this, and B, the best way for us to fund this. And so this wasn't something that the school district decided in isolation. We work very closely with our town administrators. And so when the three of them said collectively, you know what, this is what we think you should do, to us, we thought that that made sense. We have no idea because those types of questions or those things did not come up at that particular meeting that we, I believe you were there that night. Actually, at least, I believe you were there that night as well. And we didn't, so we didn't anticipate, quite frankly, that there would be any issues that night. So it kind of surprised us, I think.
Can I, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that I think there are, I'll just frame them as historical issues that have had a residual effect on the perception of the school district. And I think that still colors some perceptions. And I'm talking, you know, predating Brooke and going back to the.
And that was brought up at that meeting too.
Yes. So anyway, I'm sorry.
Let me ask you this then.
Sure.
So this was vetted before the finance committee in at least our community, okay?
Yeah, but all three.
All three.
All three, okay. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but when these matters come before a finance committee, there's usually some sort of affirmative action taken by the finance committee, either to approve or disapprove this?
I think it was just an FYI. Pat and Brooke went and presented where we ended up after, and I think the overall, we were at 2.9 increase in the budget, not.
2.9 now.
Right, overall. And then it had, you know, varying impacts on the membered towns. So what I remembered after the fact was that at that meeting, I think we mentioned that E and D had been certified at 1.2. And it was brought up at the table that it was 2.4, which wasn't true. But everything moved so fast, it was difficult. In fact, I went up to the moderator out of order and said, you know, it is 1.2. I know it's too late for perhaps that to impact anything, if you could just let the gentleman know that that's the, that's the correct amount, so.
So I'm going to follow, I don't want to take up too much time with this, I apologize, but you know, being the new guy, I just want to get a feel for this because what I'm seeing, at least from our community, is a little bit different than what I'm used to. And other communities, when it's a warrant article and it goes before a finance committee, there is usually some sort of affirmative action taken, either vote to approve or disapprove. And that's reported at town meeting. Now, maybe Lancaster works in a different way, and, you know, there are controversies regarding whether or not the warrant should state whether the FinCom or the Board of Selectmen support or don't support this, there's arguments on both sides. But what I'm trying to figure out is, and I guess the answer is no, that there wasn't any affirmative action, affirmative vote taken because it seemed to me the questions were coming from the chair. And when I hear questions coming from the chair, I assume they're coming from the finance committee. I wasn't sure if it was the finance committee making these questions, or was it the chair and his personal capacity? So if there was no affirmative action taken, then it's really a moot point at this point. So I apologize for taking up the time with this.
But I do, I remember now, I've been at town meetings where a warrant will come up, and whoever's presenting it will say the FinCom or the Select Board approved this. And in the years I've been going to Lancaster town meeting, I don't believe that that's part of the practice.
But your point is well taken because you're right in, they do that in both Stowe and in Bolton.
Right, thank you.
I think the other thing I want to make sure that it was clear, because I wasn't sure if it was clear that night in Lancaster. So like, when we take a look at this $480,000, when I, when we had this collective discussion with the town administrators, we're looking at a 10-year borrowing time between the three towns, right? So, and it was purposeful because they felt that that was something that we could live with comfortably, you know. And we all know that it has to happen, so it's a question of how do we best fund this? And so, as I say, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, as a collective, it made sense for us to do it this way. So now tonight, what we'll do is, we would ask, unless you have more questions, if Rob, we're ready to move forward with this. But we would send a new submission out to our three communities and say, it's not going to be $600,000 now, it'll be $480,000. I have already met with Bill Wrigley regarding this in Stowe, and I've met with Don Lowe in Bolton. And I've already sent an email to Orlando, who I would have met with, we just haven't been able to yet. But we've got strong working relationships with our three town administrators. So he'll know, so they're all expecting that this will come their way after you vote on it tonight, should you decide to move forward with it.
Other questions?
Leah, so did this go to Stowe?
Yes.
Well, yes, but you know, to be honest with you, so that's a great question because it did and it didn't. Because the truth is, it doesn't have to go to a town meeting. So Lancaster took it to a town meeting, and Bolton took it to a town meeting. Stowe didn't, but it went to your Board of Selectmen, and they chose that it didn't need to go to the town meeting. And that's their prerogative. So, you know, they don't have to go to a town meeting, it's just that these two communities did, but Stowe did not. It went to your Board of Selectmen, though, right? Steve's right.
Is there a point at which the number is too high, that the Selectmen cannot, you know, literally do that?
You know, I don't know because we haven't been in that position, so I don't have a good answer for you, Leah, that's a great question. But this is certainly not that number.
So Stowe's already, all three towns, the two town meetings approved it?
Lancaster did.
Lancaster did not, but by a slim margin. And I think part of it is getting to exactly what Joe was speaking of earlier.
And so now you're going to go back to the three towns with the smaller number?
Right.
And just ask the boards of selectmen to just approve it?
We're going to, that's up to, that's not our call. Our job as a school district is to notify our communities, and that's what we'll be doing tomorrow, is taking the new letter and saying, here is our, we know now exactly what we want to do, here is our new amount, and then that's up to them how they want to deal with it.
I mean, obviously, Stowe is going to approve it because they already approved a larger number, Bolton as well, I imagine, will just approve it. So where do we stand with Lancaster? Do they need to go to a special?
They don't have to. They don't have to, but that's not our call, that is strictly up to them. So we'll have to wait and see what Lancaster does, but your thinking is spot on, absolutely spot on. We don't anticipate problems in Bolton and Stowe at all with this because it is a number less than the original number.
But could Lancaster literally take it? Or could they, or would the other two towns just pick it all up?
No, that wouldn't happen.
No, they're on the hook.
It's a two-thirds. Two out of three, if two out of three approve, that's the way it is.
Is that, is that true though?
Actually, no, that's part of the problem, that's part of the problem we ran into, and so thank you for bringing that up. We thought so too. And you were led to believe that because we all believe that, including our town administrators. And then when we got down to it, it turned out, no, that we need to be in sync with all three communities, and so that's why.
Because it's borrowing as opposed to if two out of three towns pass the budget, the budget passed, but because it's borrowing.
Yeah.
Other?
I'm going to take a high road on that though, because I really.
Because you're nicer than me.
No, I'm going to take a high road on this for Lancaster. I really do think that, I think that there was some misunderstanding that night. And so, you know, when we take the letter around, I will certainly be going to that Board of Selectmen meeting that night to make sure that there is no misunderstanding on it. And I'm very appreciative of Orlando speaking on behalf of it because he had a very good grasp of the need and why we're doing it, what we were doing, so.
There's definitely a lot of confusion. I could hear the people around me that weren't, that just weren't following.
But the differences of opinion didn't help.
Right.
And there was some, I think, there's questions that were thrown out that part of my brain is thinking, well, we talked about that, and then everything just keeps moving. I'm a little slow on the uptake, so, anyway, other questions? Leah?
So very silly question, but where is the leaching field? And will the new one be in the same location?
No, that's not a silly question at all, that's a great question.
So the leach field right now is basically right across the street, on the school property, but across the street from the post office, a little parcel of grass behind the wastewater treatment facility. The new leach field is going to be completely on the backside of the property, on the backside of soccer fields.
Okay, and so I guess my next question is, considering we have the, you know, we've already contacted the MSBA, you guys have taken into consideration that if we build a new school, that the new leach field doesn't destroy all feasibility?
The design for the leach field is designed large enough for any potential expansion going forward.
And is it in the only spot that a new building could go?
No, it's totally outside of that. You have a high-pressure gas line that runs through the property, so nothing would be built on the other side of that. No school building would be on the other side of that gas pipeline.
There was a lot of conversation in my circles around that. And then the new oil tank, is this something that we would, you know, if we were to get a new building, would we just toss this purchase? Is it something that we would remove and reinstall?
I'm hoping that we either reuse it on site or we can move it to another building. It's a small enough tank that it should be a pretty easy move to a different building. That would be probably in need of an oil tank by that time.
We do a lot of that recycling of some of our larger features.
Other questions? I wonder, we went to town meeting with an amount of $600,000. And someone who may be a little cynical may say, well, why didn't you come with the $480,000 to begin with?
So that's a good question, but the truth is, well, at that point in time, the ideas are, not the ideas like the bids that we already had in, the estimates, we gave you what we had at that point in time. Now, keep in mind that we have that article ready for town meeting in February, March, right? Well, that's a lot of months between then, and we still keep working. I mean, that's a, that's at that snapshot, that point in time, what is your best guess at that point in time? And Rob was still looking at the different, like, do we look at compressed natural gas? Do we look at propane? Do we look, I mean, he was still doing all that kind of, tonight, he sits here and says, I've done all this work. I've met with a million people on this, and this is what I'm recommending tonight. So I'm very confident in what he's presenting tonight. But with that then comes the fact that you say, okay, so now we know exactly, it's going to be about this much money within, and that's why we're leaving a little bit of contingent, because contingency room, because we don't know exactly, but we're really close. If you'd asked us in February or March, that was our best number.
I think that's going to be important to highlight in terms of the process because, and also, aren't these do not exceed amounts? Even if it were $600,000, you would not go over that?
No.
And you borrow what you need? And I think that that's an important thing to emphasize in presenting. In terms of the borrowing itself, is it the same process no matter what the amount is?
Well, if it's over $500,000, it's a different process that goes into place, but this is under $500,000. So I think, and again, this is stuff I wouldn't have known a year or two, to be honest with you. But we actually have somebody who helps to oversee and works with Pat for financial advisement for our school district. And so we've been in contact with that individual, and she's really the one that helps to guide us through all of this kind of thing.
Okay.
So we don't do it just all by ourselves.
Okay, and so we're confident in the Bolton and Stowe's support of this?
Yes, we are.
And, but we're not sure when we will know about Lancaster's.
We have a certain timeframe that we must know about. And we have to know within 60 days of issuing this submission that will be submitted tomorrow. And so the clock starts tomorrow at 60 days. In essence, it'll go before the Board of Selectmen of each of the communities. Certainly, we're happy to go and attend any of those meetings. The one that we've got our eye on, of course, is Lancaster right now. And if they can choose, for example, this kind of goes back to Leah's question earlier, they can choose to hold a special town meeting just for this one item, if they choose to. I would be very surprised if any of them choose to hold a town meeting just for this because it's too much money. So, and you can imagine that, I mean, this kind of thing happens all the time across the state. I mean, things, big things break in schools all the time.
Yeah.
And so that's why there's this window of like 60 days because we've got a project that we've got to get done. So then the Board of Selectmen, as they did in Stowe, said earlier, we, I'm paraphrasing, of course, I'm not being very eloquent here, but we're comfortable with this, we're fine to do it, and so we knew that that was an automatic. And so we knew that that was an automatic as opposed to Bolton and Lancaster that said, we'll take this before our towns. But now we're at the point where saying, there's no town meeting coming up. So unless you're gonna hold one, you can certainly choose to do that. So we're, it'll be really resting right now with our Board of Selectmen.
Okay. And in the event that Lancaster does not approve, what happens next?
So then, so we have a, we have a Plan A, B, C, and D as, as we work through this. The, the next step then would be that we can mold a meeting under 16N in the regs. And that would be a district wide where everybody comes in. And then I believe the two thirds works at that point in time. If you bring in absolutely everybody. So that would be our next step if we have to go there. So it's almost like you hold your, like a special town hall meeting as a district to bring everybody together as a regional district.
And what's the quorum for that?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer on that. We're hoping we don't have to get there, but that's a great question.
No, but I mean, it's, yeah, it's better that, because Plan C is probably cutting things from our budget.
That's exactly right.
Don't want to go there.
That's exactly right.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
When, I'm sorry, I have one.
That's okay.
When does it have to be installed by the MAST DEP?
The leach field, September 1st.
So Lancaster has to agree?
Yes.
Construction has to start by September 1st?
Project has to be finished, we have to be in operation by September 1st.
In all fairness, I think that we, and I don't want to go back to DEP and ask them for any more extensions because they've worked so well with us. So I'm gonna feel very awkward if we have to go forward and say this. However, if we have to and just ask for like another 30 days or 45 days, I'm okay to do that, if we need to do that. But they have been gracious. To be fair to DEP, this problem arose before I walked in this door. That's how long we've been on the naughty list with this particular project. I don't, I can't even imagine saying it. But we're not on their good list right now. And that's not a comfortable place for us. And so if we exceed, if, if we don't get this done, then we're looking at daily fines. Like, we just don't want to go there, you know? So it has to get done.
Yes, Mary.
One question. Would there have been a mechanism for us to be able to have seen this motion, received this information and pack it to school committee ahead of time so we could have followed a little bit about this?
Nor, well, normally we do do that kind of thing, to be honest with you. But in this particular case, because you've already passed it for the 600,000, we didn't see that there was any need because the school committee has already supported the 600,000. We thought you'd be overjoyed at us coming in at the 480, quite frankly. So, but normally as a rule, Mary, that's a great question. As a rule, this kind of stuff comes to you while in advance. Yeah.
Good. And if we have, we're not under any time constraints, it's, it's also something we can consider to, to take, until the next meeting to reconsider, to consider it. So, okay. Anybody else? I'm gonna ask Elise to read the, make the motion.
Sure. So, there's a lot here. Move Nishoba Regional School District hereby appropriates $480,000 to pay costs of designing and carrying out leaching field and fuel storage tank improvements at the high school, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL C 7116D and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL 7116D, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants the districts may receive from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any other source to pay any portion of the costs of the projects approved by this vote. Further moved, within seven days from the date on which this vote is adopted, the Secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the Boards of Selectmen of each of the member towns of the district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by the district agreement and by MGL 7116D.
One second. Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, Leah. Any questions or comments? Can I make a suggestion? That it be an amount not to exceed 480? Does that change the motion substantially or do we just want it as amended?
No, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. So, if there's no further discussion or questions, those in favor of approving the motion as amended? Opposed? Okay. Leah, miss?
Thank you. Rob, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Pat, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Okay, so now we have the business manager report about revolving funds and the draft order report. So you wanna do the revolving funds?
Want me to do that first or we can?
Oh, yes, we have a guest. I'm sorry.
We have a guest, yes.
And then you can go.
I'd like you to welcome Cheryl Burke. She's from the auditing firm of Melanson and Heath. And she has performed audit this year and last year. And she has some good news. But we think it's really good news.
It is really good news. Thank you. Nice to meet all of the new folks and familiar faces from last year. And thank you, Pat, for your help during the audit process. It, it's quite a demanding process on, on the business office staff. It's quite a lot of documentation involved. But the good news is, from a school committee perspective, things that you need to know. You're hiring us to provide an opinion on your financial statements and to tell you whether or not they are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And those are the rules for financial reporting. So your audit opinion is a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It says that we do believe that they are materially fairly stated in accordance with the accounting principles. If you have seen the document, I think it's on your website at this point. It's probably about 50 pages long. Has a lot of footnote disclosures in recent years, the standards for reporting for governmental entities. There's been a lot of changes. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASP, has issued a bunch of new pronouncements and really expanded the footnote disclosures. It also made several pages in the financial statements to look a little bit negative. And specifically, the two GASP's that have been implemented in the last couple of years. One is called GASP 68. It relates to the net pension liability. It's an unfunded liability, really your proportion share of the unfunded liability in the retirement system. And that is reported in accordance with the accounting standards on one page, on the, on the statement of net position. And that's a very negative number. Even a bigger negative number is what happened in fiscal 18 for all governmental entities that are reporting in accordance with the standards. And that's GASP 75, related to the net OPEV liability, other post employment benefits. And what that is, is a liability that exists out there as calculated by your actuary that is the unfunded liability for allowing retirees to participate in your health insurance programs. And it's a very significant number. It, it hit the statement of net position, which is really the long-term perspective of your financial information, all your long-term assets, your capital assets, your long-term debt. It, it really took a hit of about 13 or 14 million as a result of that hit. But I say it's an unfunded liability. You're not alone. It's not a new liability. It's always been out there. It's just the reporting standards are now requiring that to be on the statement of net position. So governmental financial statements have one way of looking at things. That's what I've just described, the statement of net position, that's a long-term perspective. And that's what the bond rating agencies most often look at. So one of the steps that you have taken in 2018 to address some of those unfunded liabilities is to establish an OPEV trust fund. And that certainly is looked upon favorably by the bond rating, rating agencies, even though it really doesn't put too much of a dent into the liability. But really, they, they do take that into consideration. Other key indicators in your, in your financial statements go to another way to look at the financial information. It's on a short-term perspective. You look at the balance sheet and the income statement, it's called the fund basis of accounting. It's the way you account for your revenues and expenses in your general ledger. And it's very similar to the way you budget. So for instance, expensing things that are in capital in nature versus putting them on the balance sheet and depreciating them over time. So some of the key indicators related to the fund basis of accounting, probably the biggest indicator is what you call in Massachusetts for school districts, the E and D or the unassigned fund balance. And that's something that is looked very at very closely by the bond rating agencies. Massachusetts school districts have a cap on what they can have in that, in that balance. It's 5% of your budget. As of last fiscal year, I think you had indicated your, your number got certified at 1.2.
1.4.
No, it's 1.4.
1.4.
It's written on there.
Which is actually, in comparison to some other school districts, it's on the low side. A lot of schools, you know, fund balance is really something, it's your buffer, you know, in, in case of unforeseen circumstances. So it's a little bit on the low side. Other key indicators when you're looking at that balance sheet relate to deficit fund balances and other funds like grants and revolving funds. And as of the end of the fiscal year, you did have about 30 some odd thousand dollars in deficits. But most of those related to reimbursement based grants, education grants and that. And that's how they operate. You expend the money before you request. So not really a concern. And very, very small amount of revolving funds in deficit. But something to just kind of as your annual financial reporting process to make sure that you're on top of those things. Other things to look at as a school committee when you're looking at the audited financial statements would be the budget versus actual page for the general fund in the financial statements. How were the results of the actual revenues and expenditures against which you budgeted? In the last fiscal year, you came out positive on both sides. You received more than you had anticipated for on the revenue side and you had unexpendated appropriations of about 400 something thousand dollars. So that's another key indicator. Other things to think about as a school committee, in addition to those things that I've already mentioned, are something that's called the management letter. We not only provide an opinion on your financial statements, that is a key indicator, but as part of the audit engagement, we also look at your systems of internal control, how you process data, if there's any holes in it. And we have a responsibility under our auditing standards, those are our rules, to report to the school committee if there are anything that's very serious or rise to the level of what is called a significant deficiency or material weakness. Happy to report that this year, there were no such issues noted. In the previous fiscal year, there were several areas where improvements were noted and those were addressed in the last fiscal year. And I know, I was telling Pat earlier, it, it, that's a pretty fast turnaround. Typically, it takes a couple of years to really revamp the system and implement the change. So that was a, a pretty good understanding.
Sure, if I could just speak to that. I, I was thinking about this when I knew that this was coming. But I don't think I have been in a district that has had zero.
No management letter.
And it really, like, you know, zero deficiencies. And I think for this, again, for the school committee who's been sitting around this table for the last couple of years and watching what we have been through and the forensic audit and, and, you know, making all the changes, whether it was bad, whether it was, I mean, whatever it was, I mean, and to be sitting here tonight and have you say this? I, I, there are no words for me right now because I, I just, that is huge. And I, I think, you know, we thank you for your, working so closely with us to help to get us to here. And Pat, you and your office, I, I mean, oh my gosh, I'm just, I'm so incredibly proud of the, the work. And, and you just said too, to turn it around this fast. I mean, we still have areas that we're working in. And I know that you know this, I mean, in terms of, for example, borrowing so-called from our E and D every year to get, make that bunch of work. I mean, this year we didn't get to, and it was only a Brooke self-inflicted number I was trying to hit that we didn't get to. But we will get there over the next couple of years, you know? So as we try to bring that down. But even this year was still a little bit less than last year, which was less than the year before. We were getting there. But to sit here tonight and have you say this is a huge deal. And I just, I thank you so much, Pat. I thank you and your office so much. It's, it's a huge deal. Thank you.
And really, it's all you. But, you know, just, just in closing, you know, the audit process, it's, it's a necessary thing that you, that you're required to do. But certainly, we look at it as, you know, a working relationship. And we're here to answer your questions, to answer her questions, you know, throughout the year. It's not just the annual audit process.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Any questions for Cheryl or Pat about the process or comments?
No, thank you. And Pat, thank you to you and your team because I think that we were reading the, what some of the issues were and we're bringing them up at school committee, but they had already been addressed. So they, it's, when you're working with kids, you provide them with informative feedback and hope that they will take the information. And you guys sure did. But thank you.
My staff worked very hard.
Yes. And you're their leader. And we appreciate that leadership.
Yeah. Terrific. What a terrific night. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Pat, you got more? But wait, there's more. Okay.
Well, here we go. Leah is gonna bring up, there's a list of some revolving fund balances. Just for us, summary looks like this.
She can give me that, she can lay me the whole book.
Oh, well, that's fine. Just bring up the first page then.
Okay.
So I think all of you have the full book with all of the detail by quarter. And you have your questions on any of that, I can talk about it afterwards. But I first want to mention, Brooke made mention of the budget freeze. And I just want to let you know that the whole purpose of that is to make sure that we don't have a lot of open items at year end. And it makes it a lot easier when it comes to audit, you know, because those open items kind of muddy up your, your balance sheet and whatever at year end, and your E and D. So we wanted to make sure that that was pretty clean. And we also were trying to instill mindful spending in the last six to seven weeks of school. So in front of you is a summary of the revolving funds for the third quarter. And just so, I'd, I'd like to mention that we are still continuing to receive funding in some of these accounts. School Choice, Circuit Breaker, those, that, that would be funds that is coming from the state. So they give it to us monthly. And then at the end, if there's any catch-up amount, you know, if they decide to give us a little bit more, you know, we'll get it on, on June 30th.
It's already spent anywhere.
I know. And then the tuition accounts, extended day, the full day, and the preschool, we, we're still receiving tuition. So this is, this is as of, like I said, March 31st. It's really a snapshot in time for our new members. Like, again, just like, kind of when we're talking about the 600 versus 480, this is it at the second. But these numbers are all gonna change by tomorrow. So again, you know, after that March date. And some of the numbers may look a little bit high, but again, there are some expenditures that still have to happen till the end of the year. And I'll probably have a, a final report in, in early September so that we all have a final report and see where all the grant funds, all of the revolving funds and grant funds are reported out onto that as well. And I just also would like to mention that at our next meeting, I'm going to give you where I, an estimate of where I think we're going to land. You know, what my estimate of the E and D would be. For year end. How much money, just for, for year end. So that we have a pretty good idea, you know, where we stand coming into the new school year. And I want to remind again, this is more for our new members, but you heard me speak again about the E and D and the fact that we borrow, borrow from that E and D every year. And so our goal is always to have a chunk of money to put back in there because we have to borrow again the next year. And this is the, one of the wheels that we're trying so hard to get off of. But they, Melanson and Heath, to their credit, said, it'll take you more than five years to do this. We were trying to do it a little faster and we just can't. You know, so we've done our very best. We tried to do it in this budget season.
How much should you borrow from the E and D to this year?
Moving forward for, for next school year, I think 750,000. So you can see that, you know, like, and I think it was 800 this year. So you, you can't just borrow 800,000 and not put it.
So, you, you can't just borrow eight hundred thousand and not put it back. Because you, you just, so you always have to be mindful when you see her projections that part of that money has gotta go back into E and D so that we can pick it up again for the next year.
What's the maximum level for E and D?
Five percent of the new year's budget. So, when they certify in July, it will be five percent of fiscal year twenty's budget.
And how much are, is, are we at with the?
One point four as of last year, this year. I don't, we don't have all of the funding in place.
Okay.
So, I don't know exactly.
But it's not.
It's, it's nowhere near the five percent. And that's why she said, it's probably considered low by some standards.
Yeah, five percent is well over two million dollars. So, we're not anywhere near that.
Can I ask a very uninformed question? Why is it bad to have too much money in the E and D account?
Well, I don't necessarily think it's bad.
But she said it would improve our bond rating if it were lower?
No, it would improve our bond rating if our E and D is higher. So, it's, it's like, we have a reserve account. That if it was at five percent, say, it would be over two million dollars. But again, we're very mindful of what the, the communities can afford. If we don't take the money out of the E and D right now, then we have to get the money from somewhere. And basically, it's in the assessments, so the taxpayers pay. So, we're very slowly trying to get off of that wheel and keep things as level as possible.
Other questions for Pat about the revolving balance? Pat, I still have questions and I know that in the past, I was concerned about the balance in the Hale user fee account and then also the Sawyer. Is that, and then you compare it to Burbank, which has like a thousand dollars in their user fees. What is, what am I missing, what's going on?
I think the funds built up in those accounts before.
No, I know, but.
Right, and if you, Lancaster doesn't have as much money in the revolving account. They can't afford to always pay for their programs because.
Right, but if it's a user fee, then parents are paying for their children to do something. If there is money left at the end of the year, I know this is March, but in the past, there was like beaucoup bucks in there in like forever. Are we, are we charging too much? And I, I thought there was some.
We're not charging enough.
We're not charging enough is the problem.
We've reached the point that if we charge any more, then it, it isn't affordable for the kids to participate.
But I'm looking at, like, let's look at Hale, forty-one thousand dollars in user fees in March. Is that gonna be much, much lower in June?
Well, first of all, we, the stipends haven't been paid up.
Okay.
There's, there's, I think, again, please.
No, that's what I wanna understand, yeah.
This is just a snapshot in time and she said right at the beginning, there are some things that have not come out of this that will. I mean, Circuit Breaker, you're gonna notice a dramatic dip in Circuit Breaker. These fees, because they've not gone in at the year end to capture that, to transfer it to where it needs to go to, whether it's extended day or whatever. So, I think we just, I'd be really cautious with how you're viewing this.
Oh, no, no, but I'm just saying that in the past, when we presented this information, there was a lot of money perennially. And that we had a conversation.
In the other schools are?
No, Hale, well Hale and Sawyer. And, and, but if this is, I'll, I'll be interested to see what it is at the end of the year.
Yeah, sure.
But theoretically, unless something goes for seed money for the, it's just that if parents are paying for their kids to do something, it should be, shouldn't it be pretty close to?
Oh, it should be, yes.
Okay, all right.
It should be.
Okay, all right, I'll wait and see.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Pat? Elaine?
Oh, no, I was just looking at, so the, um, in this report, under, there's a page for each individual revolving fund and it includes the historicals, so the end of the year for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Yep.
So, I was seeing what you were saying, like, the Hale user fee historicals are, yeah, they're forty to fifty thousand dollars, whereas Burbank was like twelve hundred.
Yeah, but, yeah.
But it looks like on, at an annual basis, all the money is getting spent, but there's some historical backlog there.
Okay.
And I think that's exactly what she was saying.
Yes, okay, that's fine, just so long as we're not, history's not repeating itself.
No, no, I'm very mindful of making sure that the expenses that go with the activities and the user fees.
Okay, good, any more questions for Pat?
Now, all these reports are great.
Oh, I'm sorry.
By the way.
Yes, that, thank you for doing this, by the way, and again, this is another change.
It's a lot of work for an update.
But it's a change and it's very transparent and it's greatly appreciated.
It makes it so much easier from my first meeting, probably, when I was looking at similar reports and like, I don't know what this means.
That's right, yeah.
So, thank you for putting these together.
Yeah, this is, this is our second meeting of the month. How are we not to get a, shouldn't we get a ending eight?
Well, I know we had a lot at this meeting and I could've presented April's, where we have one meeting left and then the second meeting in June, you're, you're not gonna be on site. I figured I'd give you the full estimate for that.
Everything.
And that way, I mean, everything, things change daily.
I know.
You know, and I, I think that's probably the best use of time.
And they will, they will even change after June thirtieth.
That's right.
So, here's, Steve, you really understand this business, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay, so there are no subcommittee reports.
Because there are no more subcommittees.
Well, there will be, there will be new ones. So, correspondence, I got a letter from a student from the center school, very concerned about the cafeteria trash and wanted information about our use of Styrofoam trays and curious as to whether or not the district is looking at doing something that can be recycled. And if, you know, you could ask Tom what's happening.
Just so you know, we've received a number of these letters.
Yes.
I think, as you know, very often this time of year, teachers have this as an exercise. And so, we received another one, for example, about plastic straws and asking us to ban all plastic straws.
Yes.
And so, I will pass this along, I'm happy to pass this along to Tom and he actually has responded to the others as well.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure what, exactly what the exercise was, but.
Yeah, no, no, it's, I, I think it's part of what, yeah, you find an issue within.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a very, but they all seem.
We could fit it into the new active citizenship social studies framework.
There you go, and this, this is leadership, you delegate, you pass it along to get the information.
I think though, in this case, really, I think a lot of it was aimed at recycling and such and it all seemed to, um, kinda hinge on our food services, because that's what we're seeing. And so, I think it's, I think it's very, very cool. I think it's a really neat process that they take here.
My understanding is they had a competition around various issues and they had to convince Mr. Volkeren the most pressing environmental issue at the school, composting was one.
Wow, that's great.
I still remember doing this when I was a student, so that's how much it sticks with kids.
Is that interesting?
Writing a letter to some local politician, like you've got, say, or.
Please do something about this.
Well, when my daughter was in the seventh grade, a hundred years ago, they were doing, they collected trash and put it in the front of the school and the goal was to get it down and all these recycling things. So, that was, I can't remember how old she is, it's probably like thirty-one or two years ago when she was in the seventh grade. And she compelled me to stop using paper napkin and I stopped. And we use cloth napkins and as sort of a mindfulness therapeutic thing, I even iron them because it makes me feel good when.
So, now we're using the water and the electricity.
Yeah, buzzkill, okay, I'm not using paper napkins.
And then to iron, more electricity is being.
You know what, I'm just gonna use my sleeve now.
There's an old song.
Yes, dear.
Where somewhere is the line as, "I'd really like to help you, son, but you're just too young to vote."
Well, I appreciate the, the, the letter from Beatrice.
Yes.
And also the input, but I'm still using my napkins. So, one more piece of, of correspondence I just wanted to share was just, I heard from a parent concerned about the, um, the early release schedule and the changes and just wanted to be sure that we were going to evaluate it in some way. And my feedback to her was that was our plan to evaluate it. So, that's, um, that's all I have, I don't know if anybody received any other correspondence, yes?
As a new member, should we plan to share out all important correspondence?
No, I think that it's, um.
No, you, it, it, no, it should, all correspondence, and you'll see this as we, because we'll have an orientation meeting here shortly for, for all of you. Everything goes through the chair, everything funnels through the chair. And generally, the notion is that it's correspondence of note, not all correspondence. And so, you know, what she's bringing forward tonight, for example, because we have received a number of these letters makes sense.
Yeah.
Because we've had some communication with regards to the school calendar, that makes sense. So, it really goes through the chair and then the chair decides what correspondence of note that she should bring forward. So, but as individual members know, but we'll, we will review all of that too. And, and just because, I can say this right now, including because we're talking emails, do keep in mind that as a school committee member, all of your emails can be reviewed for public, you know, by the public at any point in time. So, I, I encourage, you'll, you'll get, I believe, effective tomorrow, right, a leader that have their NRSV accounts set up? Or do they have them already?
They have them now, they just don't know how to access them.
Okay, so we'll get you to access them and then that's the email address that you should be using for ever, anything related to school district should be funneling through that and no personal, as we get for a multitude of multiple reasons.
And just to piggyback on what Brooke's saying, there was an email that came through directed at the entire school committee relative to a, a study through Mass General Hospital or something. And you don't have to respond to those. If a constituent gets in touch with you, obviously, you can, you know, communicate. And we'll be talking a lot about this when we do our goals meeting with Dorothy. You know, she will direct us, guide us on, on how to respond. But anything that is sent to the whole committee, I'll consider and I'll, I'll let folks know how, what the response was, Steve.
No, I'm just saying, you, you're the one who responds.
Yes.
We do not respond as school committee members.
Right, right.
We have, we do not have the authority to speak as a school committee member, we can speak as an individual.
Right, right. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, um, the consent agenda, I'm, I, I think that I just learned today that we have to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. And for the new members, if you have a chance to review the minutes beforehand and if you see anything that is in, that is in error or that you feel should be added, you contact Alina and then we review them and come prepared to accept them. Uh, Joseph?
I have a question regarding consent agenda. First of all, I just wanna make a statement that, my understanding is that the, what we're going to do at this point is there's gonna be a motion on the consent agenda and it's sort of a bundled motion.
Yes.
And we approve the past minute meetings as well as the warrants for this date, okay? That being said, I will not vote, and I don't want to misconstrue here, since I was not a member of the committee on the eighth of May, on the twenty-fourth of May, I wouldn't feel it appropriate for me to vote on that.
Right.
So, one of two things is, one is either the chair in your discretion could either vote to unbundle and have the previous members either vote on, on the, the motion to approve the minutes or I will simply just abstain from the full motion on that. But my question is this, my last time before the district committee, we didn't have the worldwide interwebs at that point. So, I say that tongue in cheek, I know it's the internet. But I did note on the draft minutes that I received, that there are links to a video feed and to the materials. So, my question is this, when we vote to approve the minutes, are we also including the video feed and the materials? I asked that because I said there are links in the minutes to both of those, uh, uh, to the, the video and to the, to the materials. So, I don't know what the pack, past practice of the district is. When you vote to approve the minutes, are we voting to approve the video and the materials as the quote-unquote official transcript of our meeting? Or are we just voting to approve the minutes? And if we're just approving, if just voting to approve the minutes as our official transcript, the question then becomes, and if you don't know, I, I, because I don't know, does the, the video and the materials then become packaged with our official transcript?
So, that's a great question and I, I would tell you just off the bat, like, right out of the gate, I don't think I have an answer on that.
Yeah.
So, that's a great question and I, I will contact our legal counsel on that and see. And so, maybe what we will do tonight is not take a vote at all, I might suggest that we just leave it as we've always done it and just leave it for now. Let us get clarification on that.
We can move it to the next.
That's fine, no, I appreciate that.
But thank you for bringing it up.
And can I ask one follow-up question on that?
Sure.
Done question of the night, who owns the video feed?
So, Bolton Access TV would own the video feed.
Okay.
They have a YouTube channel, they post it on their YouTube channel.
Okay.
They're in control of it, asking links.
Okay, so the reason I ask is that they, they have editorial control over the video, correct? So, we would have no editorial control over, over that video, okay? I, I only ask because I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we should, first of all, as a, as a body politic, we can't exercise any copyright rights. We can't exercise any copyright privileges over the, the video. But sometimes things come up at these meetings and there are FCC regulations. And I assume that it's then falls on Bolton Public Access to edit the meetings and to.
There's no editing.
No, I realize that, but it, it's come up in the past and not before this committee, I don't think, but somebody might get up and citizen participation and say something inappropriate, you know? At which point, that might be edited out of the.
No, we had a situation last year where someone got up and, and made, um, created a disruption.
Right.
And we took a recess and the camera went off and dealt with that and then it went back on. So, in terms of exercising that level of discretion, I, I find it to be here. If we go into executive session, the camera goes off. So, but no, they can't, it can't edit it out, but, yeah, and I'm not aware that.
We could remove that line just from the, just for the recording. As far as the packets, retention loss is that we have to keep them. Anything that's handed out is, is part of the minutes for six, we only have to keep those for six months, but we have to keep the minutes and the agendas forever. But the packets, we only have to keep for six months. So, we're approving what was handed out that has to be kept for six months in case a citizen requests them, then after that. So, we are, we are approving the, the packet material because it is part of the minutes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So, it's important that we review all the materials for purposes of approving the minutes when it comes to that, okay?
They are part of the minutes, the packet material.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to find out, okay?
And we go through, I mean, as you see, we go through them, they're, they're, as they correlate to agenda items, we look at them as we're having discussions, et cetera.
Yeah, thank you.
So, you're gonna check with legal counsel about the consent and we'll just move everything to the next.
Yes.
That's fine.
I do think we have to approve the warrants.
The warrants.
Oh, yes, we have.
Oh, yes, I was gonna say.
Otherwise, nobody gets paid.
Well, let's do that then. Can I have a, a motion to approve the warrants of May twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay, so items to be considered for next agenda, this is where we look at the, Mary?
Nope, I'm waiting to.
We are looking at the, it, it is one of the meeting materials, the planning calendar. And at the end of each meeting, we ask for items to be considered for the next agenda, but I'd also ask people to look at what is currently there for June. This is our last meeting for May, so we're looking at the June meeting. So, what we have on for the fifth are the sub, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the district improvement plan, we're moving, we're moving that top item as per discussion. I don't know, I think she's already got it off already, okay, yes, she does.
Okay, all right, so, but let's look at the next, the, the meeting on the nineteenth will be our goals workshop and so that will be the focus of them.
Things that are supposed to be on, done on the nineteenth, like the signature vote, should be done.
Should be done on the fifth.
On the fifth.
Yes.
It is revised, Steve, you probably printed it before I revised it.
Sorry. He's efficient, what can we say?
Do you want me to put it up there so everyone can see it?
No, that's all right, no, 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 that's all right.
So, we have a subcommittee assignments.
If you did that, that's fine.
The, are you gonna be doing the communication, chain of command?
Yeah.
We have a C. We have a CPAC presentation, um, social emotional update from the high school.
That's great.
Stackhead review, and then the summer warrant signature vote. So, Mary, did you have something?
Um, what I wanted to talk about was including the pledge of allegiance as part of the standing agenda for regular school committee meetings and to have a motion to that effect.
And a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do you wanna add that? And, and understand that if we go late, we will move it to another agenda.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
But if, once it's on.
Yes.
It may get moved, but we'll get to it.
That's fine, I have another one.
Okay.
So the other one has to do, and, and with the regional district school committee agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Section one C, and I'll just read this quickly, and this does not have to be the next meeting, but the partici, the population of participating towns shall be determined every five years in accordance with the town's annual census, that's certified by the respective town clerks. The census will be, will be reviewed by the regional school district committee to determine if the number of representatives elected from each town is within the standard ten to sixteen percent deviation in compliance with the one person, one vote ruling. So, I would just like to, you know, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but it's at some point. And I, I have done a little bit of background on this, trying to find out, and it should have, there's a, there's a, a schedule for review, so it's every five years, so perhaps it was done in two thousand and sixteen?
Can you take a look at?
Yeah, I, it has not been, it has not been done in my time here. And we've already been looking into it, and it was already on our radar, so we would've brought it forward. I, I think that we have to have it, Pat, help me out here, Elise, I believe we have to have it in play if we're gonna do anything before the next town meeting.
Yes.
So we, we would have to do something before that next article, warrant. And if we needed an article and a warrant, we'd have to have that by, probably by like March, February, March. So we would have to have this discussion and the homework on it, whatever research, early fall, you know, before December.
It is the onus for that on the school committee or district administration or the town?
No, that's gonna have to be, well, I think we're gonna have to work in, there's gonna be a process here, and I think we're gonna have to work in consultation with our lawyers on this, because I certainly have never done this before, so.
Okay.
And then I'll work with the town administrators on this.
So could we, um, maybe this would be something that, that you might be able to get information on over the summer.
And bring back.
And bring it back.
That's fine.
And that, one of the things we'll be doing at our meeting on the nineteenth is looking at the annual planning calendar. So, um, that's an opportunity for folks to look at the big picture and see if there are other things. I know, Elaine, that this year you brought up that we have a policy relative to having the student council from the high school do a presentation.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can talk about those things, okay? Are we good? Okay, so if there are no other things to be considered, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, thank you everyone, and thanks to our new members.